Time is now 7:00 PM. I'll call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. Please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's town council meeting is being streamed live via YouTube. Please go to the Town of Bridgewater Facebook page for the link. Before we begin this evening, I do have some condolences from our Veterans Agent. Please join me in recognizing James Leo Two Day, U.S. Army, passed away on August 8th. Please have a moment of silence for Leo. Thank you. Next, we have Joseph Campbell, U.S. Air Force, passed away on August 7th. Please have a moment of silence for Mr. Campbell. And lastly, James TeShara Jr., U.S. Air Force, served in Afghanistan, passed away on July 25th. Please have a moment of silence for Mr. TeShara. Thank you. Okay, first up, we'll have approval of minutes from our previous meetings. First up, August 5th meeting minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have to do roll call because Kevin's on.
Oh, he's on Zoom?
Yep.
Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, next, approval of August 12th meeting minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, thank you. And so we'll do roll call again.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
And Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have announcements from the President. I just wanted to make a short announcement regarding one of our agenda items later on. We do have a discussion and a potential of sending an order to advertising this is for the, an order establishing a tax increment financing district. I just wanted to make it clear to the public because there was some conversations. I did have a lot of emails and communications with residents, which I certainly always appreciate. And I just wanted to make it clear that tonight, we are having a discussion about sending this to advertising. And this is merely to create a district, which would then potentially open up an opportunity for a discussion, to have an agreement from a potential developer come forward to us. And that is all that we're doing tonight, is potentially sending that to advertising. And that would then be advertised for a public hearing. The potential, if it's the will of this council, we would have that meeting, it looks like, October 7th, in which we could discuss the matter further. And we would, again, potentially set up a district and then move the process forward from there. We obviously welcome everybody's comments in regard to this matter and all matters. But I just wanted to make that clear as to what that process would look like for everybody that may want to come up and speak on that tonight. And then we'll move on to a presentation that we have from the Plymouth County Commissioner's Office. Please join me in welcoming Sandra Wright, who has a big check for us from the ARPA program. Can you use the mic? So that people online can hear you.
Sandra Wright, Plymouth County Commissioner, also a resident here for 46 years. Great to also be here to be with you people this evening. I brought in a map showing you the territory in which we cover, which is 659 square miles. And we represent 531, 889 people within the district. So this is just an idea of what we cover. So that's that. And I just want to thank you for having me. Of course, I waited all summer to come in here and present this. Now that I'm here, I've lost my voice. I think we've gone out too many towns to present checks, so I might go in and out. I'd like to also welcome the new town manager. It's a pleasure to meet him this evening, and I know I'm meeting with him on Monday. Commissioner Valenzola, Commissioner Hanley, and Treasurer O'Brien sent their regrets as they were unable to come this evening because they have other obligations in the county. I would like to thank Council Lindy for serving on the Advisory Board. We greatly appreciate his service to Plymouth County. Although I also would like to encourage all of you at some point to serve on it, because I think you find a lot of different programs that we serve. And it would certainly bring back a lot of information to the council. I know Counselor Lindy, as he comes to the meetings, I know whatever we deliver that evening, he brings back and updates you of what we're doing. The Advisory Board also does our budget every year. So that's, you know, a big package in itself. They meet about twice a year, maybe three times a year, not very much. So I'm here this evening to present a check to the Town of Bridgewater in the amount of $248,130.50 for the project in which you had requested it for. You have a piece of paper in front of you explaining what it is for. And it is for the water well replacement in accordance with the M. R. M.A.S.D.E.P., Town Project Description. The Town of Bridgewater, in accordance with the Water Master Capital Plan and Drinking Water Planning, is replacing two wells. And I know you can read the rest of it, but that's what the application was for, that you put into Plymouth County for this money. This money cannot be used for anything other than what the application is for. A lot of people have asked me, well, can they put it in the general fund? Can they put it here? Can they do this and that? No, it has to be used for what the application was for. Otherwise, it'll get clawed back, so you don't want to do that. I don't want to give it to you and then take it back from you, so. I'd also like to thank the town manager, the past town manager, Mr. Dutton and his staff for doing such a great job, working with Plymouth County as a team to get the funds out as quickly as we could to the community of Bridgewater. Back in 2020, 21, the federal government gave monies to help the county get the money through for COVID epidemic, which never has happened before. And the towns had no idea how to manage it or even the staff to follow such guidelines, which changed daily, and they really did, almost hourly, the guidelines changed in the COVID. Nobody really knew what it was about, how they were going to handle it, what they were doing. So there was a lot of changes, all in the very beginning. You really had to have a master's degree to be able to put it all together and keep it intact where the money was going, make sure every T was crossed, every I was dotted, which I'm very glad to say that our Treasurer did do that. That is where we came in, to help our constituents to fill out necessary applications in order to get any of their funding out. Now, each town was allotted money according to their population. Some of the counties gave their money back to the state. Bristol County, Norfolk County, gave their $90 million back to the state, I guess, lack of funding or whatever. We decided that that was not what we wanted to do. We wanted to keep it within our communities, leaving more money on the table for our counties. So that was the most substantial thing that Plymouth County did, is to manage CARES and ARPA funds, which in the beginning was questionable. We had a lot of backlash on that. A lot of the towns wrote us letters saying, no, don't do it, you can't do it, you don't know how to do it, you're not ready to do it, and blah, 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 all that. We got everybody on board that we possibly could, our senators, our representatives. We talked to them about what this money would bring back into their communities, and assured them that we could manage it. We got the right people and to do what they needed to do, and we were able to manage it. So therefore, we were able to give $87 million out to our communities for CARES Act in a fashionable amount of time. I like to think of it, we did it faster, we did it better than the state, and we only did it with 1% administration fee. 1% administration fee, why not 4%? Why not 8%? Why not 15%? Because by doing it at 1%, that's where we left the money on the table for the communities. And we thought that that's where it was, should have gone, is in our community. So now I know you support seven different programs through Plymouth County. One is the 4H, the entomology, Mayflower Municipal Health Group, parking, mobile integrated health, that's a new one. I don't know if Mr. Lindy elaborated on that when, after the last meeting we had, we integrated this. But it's a mobile that we have put money into, to go out and take care of people coming out of the hospitals, instead of having repeated return to the hospitals. You can't just call them, it's not an ambulance, it has to be assigned by a doctor to send them out, and they take care of them at home, whatever needs that they might have. So this is really taking off. We're very proud of this program, and we're going to be funding it for the next year going forward. We're pretty, so out of the seven, you're in seven out of the 14 programs, but you know, there are a lot more that we would like to commit and talk to you about. I know also, one of the programs is the OPEB or Peacock, which I'm very excited about. I hounded Mr. Dutton for two years on it and told him he had to get into it. He couldn't fund it on his own, or he shouldn't fund it on his own. And so finally, he came in and into the program, and at that point, and I think you have, I gave you a paper there too, you'll see that you got 13% interest on that money for the first three years, which is, who doesn't, who wouldn't love to get 13% on their funds? So they really, it's really done well. So we're so proud of Bridgewater stepping up, getting into the program, and putting the money to work for them. So also, the dredge program is another one that I was very passionate about. I brought in a dredge back in 2012. And the reason why I brought it in was because I looked around to all the towns and saw that their rivers and lakes and ponds and everything were just overgrowing, they're a mess. And unless we keep them clean, you're not going to be able to keep the natural resources. It's going to be, then become diseased, and it's going to be mosquito-infested. So it's really important that we keep, you know, care of our dredges. And also, the reason why, two reasons why I wanted the dredge is because when you take the silt out in the bottom of the river, that silt should be clean. And if it's clean, you can sell it or use it for your own departments for the snow. So there's a two-part there that I always liked about it, not just, you know, one, we're just going to clean it out. Plus, it also helps with, I had an argument with somebody up at the State House one day about floods. And I said, we don't have a flood problem, you know, in most places. And, you know, we get into a little argument, but I said, I think the problem is, is that we're not going out and we're not, you know, moving all that silt around. And therefore, it just keeps on rising and rising and rising. And when you take it out, it just makes more room, it, you know, gets rid of the grass and the debris and everything. And I think, again, you're, you know, cleaning up and keeping your natural resources. We lose them, we're in big trouble. Our natural resources are very important for so many reasons. So I've been a big advocate for that. I think I won the argument, or he got frustrated and left me, but that's okay. But anyways, I think we should look at it. I thought you were in our dredge program, you are not, and that's okay. But we do have a dredge that you can use and clean up some of the rivers. I know you've probably all gone around and seen what they look like, but they do need some attention, so I greatly appreciate you looking into that. So it has been a pleasure working for Plymouth County, 26 towns in the city of Brockton. We cover a big area, lots of questions. We try to work, no two towns are alike, but we like to, you know, work and see what their needs are. Everybody doesn't have the same needs. So now I come to the best part. CARES Act, I'm going to tell you, even though we bring in these small, not small checks, but these smaller checks, they amount up. So I have totals for you. For the CARES Act, we gave you $3,550,844.55. For ARPA, we've given you $4,962,614.62. The total for that is $8,513,359.17. And now with this check this evening for the $246,135, it comes to $8,761,489.67. So that certainly helps in times of need. And I know that we've been very active and out there trying to promote and do whatever we can for our towns, so. Any questions?
Councillors.
Yes, I have a question. Who in the town would be doing the dredging, do you know? And how do they contact about the dredger?
Usually, they use someone in the conservation, they can run the dredge. But if you have any questions about, you know, you can contact Frank Basler down at Plymouth County. It goes out to many, many, and it's funny, because you can only use the dredge during certain times because of the fish mating, you can't use it. So there's only certain times, and we have a list of people signing up that could get on the list during certain times that the fish mating. So you would have to get on a schedule, so. And, you know, there isn't, we tried, when we first started, we tried to say, okay, so how much should we, you know, cost, or how much should it cost for each town? Well, every town isn't the same, and some towns have barely nothing at all, and some towns have a lot more. So we decided we would do like a square foot and do it that way. So whatever you have, you can, you know, pay that. It's been down the Cape a lot, down in Falmouth has used it a lot down there. Some of our towns up here, they, I know that they have funds, there are grants for waterways, and that you can get money for that. But it would be your conservation, I think, that would run that.
Thank you.
Also, one other thing I wanted to tell you was that a lot of people get very, because I get a lot of questions, you know, like, what are you doing with the money? Who gets the money? How much did you keep? What do I, you know, so on, so on. I think some of the confusion is the state gave the towns money for ARPA, and also the county gave money for ARPA. So that's where some people are confused, thinking that, you know, the ARPA funds are all the same. They're not. I don't know what you get for the state or from the state. But county government was allotted $101 million towards ARPA funds, and that's used for sewer water and broadband during the epidemic times. So if there's any confusion, I know that, you know, the time is now over, December 31st was the deadline for you to get your applications in. We also said at that time, if some of the towns, which we had some towns that couldn't use all their money, we clawed it back, and if you had an application, and that's what this is tonight, I believe this is the additional money that you got. So you were able to get money that another town couldn't use. So we allotted it out to people who put other applications and to get additional monies.
Thank you. And Mr. Lindy had a question?
Not a question, just a comment. I think it's great to see county government working with local government. The 1% administrative fee is outstanding.
It is.
And then the 13% interest that you talked about as well. So there are parts of the state that the counties aren't functional. Plymouth County is a functional county and has done really good work, and thank you for your work.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. You being on the Advisory Board, you know all the ins and outs and what we do and programs that we're bringing in, they're very important. I think every town, there's so much need, especially with, you know, so much in finances and what you have to, you have to cover, that there is a lot there that we can help you with. Even your Peacock, you made fantastic money on that. Like I said, who wouldn't want 13% on their money? So you've made good money.
Just one more thing. We now need a county agricultural school, so we don't have to bus people and spend all that money to Bristol and Norfolk Aggie if we, when we were doing the budget stuff. And also, we have the firefighting facility on the prison grounds, but I'd love to see that funded and expanded more, so our fire department and other fire departments in the area can come to Bridgewater and maybe do the firefighting here versus, Academy versus Stowe.
Well, me being a firefighter for 15 years, I know what you're talking about. I also looked in there, we have 11 acres down there that we were going to provide for the firefighters, because they did come down from Stowe and set up that down there. So there is a need for it. And I also have put out a program for gun range for our police and fire, I mean, for our police, that they really now have no place that they can go to do their training and shooting, and they're so particular. So that was something like $47 million that, you know, we were looking at. We're not that rich yet, I know, we can't do it yet, but I'm pushing for it. So there's a lot that they can do, we can do, and it is important that all of these firefighters and police officers go and get trained, because, you know, the new way, things that are coming out now, it's a whole, whole different way to fight fire and police issues. So we all see it every day in our life.
Anything further? Well, again, thank you very, very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just asked that we take a picture with the check, so that I can prove I was here today.
Yeah, let's all take a photo?
All of us?
Yeah?
Yes, everybody will come up and we'll take a picture.
Okay.
Please. You ready? I took four. Okay, great. Now you need... Okay, and one other thing, when we presented the checks, we used to hold our own check that I'm going to give to the town manager, but somebody focused in on the picture, they took our check and made checks made up and pulled them out. So that's why we do this.
Wow.
Took us a little while to figure it out why it happened, so you never know. So now we're going to get a picture with us holding the check, and then a picture without me holding it.
You, you two got to switch, there you go. All right, you ready? Gotcha. Just him? Where are you going? Ready? Going to focus in on that check.
Now you guys have to endorse the big check.
So this is for you.
Yes.
This is your packet.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Yeah, no problem, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you again, Sandy, and to the Plymouth County Commissioner's Office, we all really appreciate it. And then next up, we also have Mr. Fred Clark from Bridgewater State University, who'd also like to present something to us.
Thank you very much. It's great to be before the council. Thank you for the invitation to be here. It's been a while, I think, since I've been invited. I also want to thank the town manager for the invitation to be here. But before I begin, I want to thank you for your service. It's not an easy time in this country to serve, and I think when people put themselves forward for no pay and in service to their community, it deserves appreciation. Having served on boards in my town, Easton, for 13 years, I understand what you give up to be here. So I thank you for your service to the great town of Bridgewater. I'm joined here by Vinnie DiMascio and Mike Hogan from Bridgewater State. And one of the reasons I really wanted to come, as I told the town manager, is it's a birthday party for Bridgewater State this year. In 2025, we turn 185 years old as a university. And if you don't know, yes. It's worth remembering, just for a few minutes, why we're in the town of Bridgewater. 185 years ago, about 187 years ago, really, there was a fierce competition in southeastern Massachusetts to host what would become Bridgewater State. It was Horace Mann, the father of public education, who had an idea. And the idea was to bring education to the masses. The more Americans that had an education, not at a primary level, because everybody had that, but at a secondary level, because only the privileged had that, never mind a higher education, which was privileged even more. His idea was to bring education to the masses. It was good for our democracy, it's good for citizenship, it's good for our economy, and frankly, it's good for our society. But there was no equalization of the training of teachers at that time. It was very, very uneven. So his idea was to create normal schools to normalize the training of teachers. We are the third teacher-training institution founded in the United States of America, and the only one that is actually in the very place where it was founded. So we have a big battle with the other two institutions that are one and two, Fitchburg and, sorry, Framingham and Westfield. They moved from town to town, we stayed put. But the battle was between Bridgewater, Town of, Middleborough, and Plymouth. And the townspeople of Bridgewater fought vigorously to bring what became Bridgewater State. And there's one of your forefathers, founders of the town, one of the giants in this town was a gentleman named Artemis Hale. Hale Street is named after him, if you don't know. Artemis Hale was a business owner who raised $10,000, and it took $10,000, which was a lot of money, in 1837. It was a lot of money. And you had to raise that money to have any chance to compete. So we're really glad that the townspeople came together, raised private funds, to bring Bridgewater State to Bridgewater 185 years later. Today, the Town of Bridgewater and the university are one community. They're not two, they're one community. And I want to talk to you a little bit about that tonight. And while we started off in a very, a small basement of a class, with a class of about 20 students, today, we're the 10th largest university, public or private, in Massachusetts. Fourth largest public, the largest of the nine state universities, frankly, by far. We are the largest in southeastern Massachusetts, dwarfing even UMass Dartmouth. We are still the state's number one producer of teachers. But we're also the state's number one producer of social workers. We have an accounting program that is the best in the state. We produce pilots. We don't fly out of Bridgewater, we fly out of New Bedford, but we have many, many programs that, of course, we should have as we evolve as an institution. What you might not know is Bridgewater is also ranked the third safest college or university in America, based on Department of Justice and FBI statistics. Third safest in America. And I hope you know this, but the Town of Bridgewater is the 25th safest college town in the United States of America. And by the way, those statistics do not speak to each other, separate statistics. Safe university in a very safe town. And you might not know this, but just last week, the Town of Bridgewater was ranked top seventh most beautiful college towns in Massachusetts. We're very, very proud of that as well. So we're very proud to be here in Bridgewater 185 years later. But I'm thinking about that $10,000 raised by Artemis Hale. So with the help of Mike and Vinnie behind me, we just did an economic impact survey, an economic impact report. We're going to release it to the entire Town of Bridgewater, we'll mail it out to every towns person and every business in this community. As we typically do with our, kind of, every couple of years, we tell the townspeople, what are we doing together? I hope you've been able to see that. So we'll be mailing that out within the next 60 days, but here's some highlights. Bridgewater State University, directly and indirectly, generates 2,609 jobs, which feature a $205 million labor earnings amount, $254 million in additional gross domestic product. And all of that activity generates 4.9 million in state taxes and 3.6 million in local taxes. Most all of that activity is in Plymouth County, which I know the county commissioners and the county treasurer really appreciate. We have 533 students from the Town of Bridgewater who are enrolled at Bridgewater State today, 533. I just left a giant barbecue, which is why I'm losing my voice too, to welcome many of them. We've given those students 4.6 million, these are just the students from the Town of These are just the students from the town of Bridgewater, and tuition and fee and financial aid for each of those students, which averages $9,000 each. Our students, as a group, paid $18 million in rent to off-campus housing. And our students spend $2 million a year at 187 different Bridgewater businesses in this town, and that's a part of 64.5 million that our students spend in southeastern Massachusetts. We are having a good enrollment year. We are about 1,000 students smaller than we were pre-pandemic still. We were bigger, we were at 11,000, we're at 10,000 today. But we have just welcomed our largest first-time, full-time class in our history. All freshmen coming out of high school, transfer students who are a little bit lower, which is why I won't say it's our largest class in our history, it's not. But they're very, very excited to be here. We've announced the Bridgewater commitment, where if you come from a family that makes $125,000 or less, and you're a commuter at Bridgewater, you go to Bridgewater State tuition and fee-free. That's built on Pell Grants, please don't cut those. State financial aid, please don't cut that. But even more importantly, what separates us from everyone else, including the privates, $20 million of our own money, institutional money, to our students to help lower the cost to go to higher education. That does not count private funds as well. But we're also a big neighbor in this community. I think you know this already. We are your largest payer of water and sewer fees. And yes, we do pay those fees, 1.9 million every year. We also paid 160,000 electrical permits last year and this year. And if you don't know this, we also waive tuition and fees for any town employees. Just in the past few years, 16 town employees took advantage of that for a cost of $100,000. We're really, really happy to do that. And in more recent years, we've partnered on Shared Streets, partnering with the town with $400,000 of university money, which we're proud of. But it's not just about the money. We also provide volunteer time for this great community. Just last year, through just our Martin Richard Institute for Social Justice, we provided 1,267 volunteer hours to a variety of town groups. 200 of our employees live in town. Many of our alumni live in town, there's some behind me over here. And we have 20,585 BSU alums just in Plymouth County. And by the way, we hope to bring most of them home for homecoming on October 18th. You're all invited. We'll invite the neighborhood as well. It is fun. But our external partnerships are only as good as our partnership with the town of Bridgewater. I'm in my 11th year as president. I'm a graduate of Bridgewater State. I worked in the United States House of Representatives, representing Bridgewater. I understand how important town-gone relationships are. It begins and ends with our relationship with Bridgewater. We're very, very happy to have met the new town manager. We've spent time together, got hired, by the way. We've always had good and respectful relations with town leaders. Chief of Police, Fire Chief, Highway, Council on Aging, Superintendent of Schools, Department of Economic Development, Veterans Outreach, and everyone who works at this great town. We also get together a couple times a year. We call it boots-on-the-ground meetings. What's the university doing? What are the expectations of the town? Are we coming together so that nobody has a surprise, a negative surprise? We communicate often. We're also happy to support town events, Festival of Lights, Council on Aging, Annual Thanksgiving, Council on Aging, Trip to the Winter Concert in Worcester, Music Alley, Bridgewater Random School Department, a whole separate slew of activities there with the school department, not just providing excellent teachers, but also even hosting the high school swim team to use our university pool. But we also open our science facilities to thousands and thousands of students in southeastern Massachusetts, and that includes 1,300 students from the town of Bridgewater. We're also working with you to try to do something better with the mobile gas station. We've made a commitment of $100,000 through the university and our foundation. We have to make that property better, and I know that we will. So from Autumn Fest to Senior College to Fourth of July Parade to our partnership with Anacotus Greenway, there are no walls between this great university and this great town. There's only us, one community. But we know that we can do more going forward, and we intend to. We have surplus property on Hale Street, ironically Artemis Hale, back to the state because we weren't going to use it, to put it back on the tax rolls and use it for housing. But at the same time that we're looking at that and the state now has that property, we know that you have water and sewer capacity issues. The institution has already undertaken water flow reduction interventions at every single building on our campus and every plumbing fixture on this campus since I've been at Bridgewater in an administrative role. But we know we also have to work together to increase wastewater capacity. We've already reached out to the Department of Corrections to see if we could partner with them on wastewater. It's something we'll work with the town manager on. And we have talked to the state's leaders in regards to the need for the enhancement of water and wastewater capacity for this town to be able to do any kind of construction, including housing. I just want you to know, 185 years later, as a son of Bridgewater State, on behalf of all of our students, our 2,000 faculty and staff who work at the institution, and our 85,000 alumni who are spread throughout the state, that we are very, very proud to be in this community and to be your partners here in the town of Bridgewater. Now, I didn't really want to go after the county with that big check, but we do make a gift, in addition to the gifts that we make through all of the programs that I mentioned, in addition to the gifts that we give to the school department. But in recent years, not in lieu of taxes, but just as a gift, because we know that we pressure the fire department principally, the police department and the highway department, under my tenure as president, we've started to give the town $50,000. This year was $55,000. Town manager already asked me to do better next year, so I'm committing here to do 10% more next year, so I have a check for $55,000. But I don't want you to think about the money. I want you to think about the partnership and all of its expressions that we have together with all of the organizations, every one of them, in the town of Bridgewater. That's what it means to be a part of a community, and that's what it means to us. Not going to ask you to take a picture, because I don't, now I'm scared. I don't want anybody to get my routing number on this, so I'm going to give this to your town manager. I thank you for the time. Again, thank you for your service. I'm very happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Do you have any, any questions?
Just a sentiment, as a BSU alum myself, and proud Gamma Phi Beta. That's a connection, too. I just want to say thank you for your service to a school that I love very much. I come from a long line of people that absolutely love and adore Bridgewater State, from my grandfather to my godmother, to everyone in between. And under your leadership, they, especially my godmother, who's gotten to work with you on the Board of Trustees, has had nothing but amazing things to say about how you carry yourself and how you are definitely student-driven. And I do think that more people in the community need to understand that, that it's very important, not only to be revenue-driven in this world, but it's very important to be student-driven, and that's why your retention is as high as it is. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, counselor. Thank you very much. Take any other hard questions like that?
Yeah. Mr. Lindy?
Not a question, a comment, just other things that the college does for the town is the BSU Maxwell Library is available to residents. We have a wonderful town library, but we actually have two. And it has three floors, and it's great to walk in those three floors when the weather's bad outside, so. And you guys have The New York Times, and the library has The Wall Street Journal, so you got to do both. But the athletic facilities, different other things. When Juneteenth happens, it's at University Park. Rotary has met at Bridgewater State. So just the asset you are to the community and in teaching and higher ed, the other institution nearby at Massasoit, it's just an asset to the town. Some of the facts and figures you gave us tonight, I'm looking forward to actually seeing that report with all of that information. And thank you for the update on the water usage and some possible solutions to help in the town. So thank you for all your service.
Counselor gave me an opening here. I should have mentioned it earlier, The Wall Street Journal has ranked Bridgewater State University as one of the best colleges or universities in America. And that's because of return on investment, for what our students pay, for the debt that they have at the end, for the jobs that they have, and for the ability to get through, to graduate. So we've been named twice, and maybe next week, fingers crossed, we'll be named a third time. Thank you.
Just as a, how you read, as a personal person who was an employee here at Bridgewater Town Hall for a while, I want to say the response always from BSU was incredible. When the basement was flooded over at the old Town Hall in a terrible, terrible mess that was bad for the health of everyone, we weren't allowed to go down to the basement, BSU came up and cleaned it up for us. I didn't hear a sound about how much it should cost or anything like that. When we digitized records, that I was so excited that we digitized all of our town records, and I went to put them online, and our IT department said, no, no, we don't have capacity for that. And I called Orson at the university, and he said, yeah, sure, we have capacity. So they're out there for the whole town and the whole world to get that, that information now. Those are the kind of things, to me, that were like the daily things. I wasn't running daily, asking for something from the university, nor was the university running here daily, asking for something. But together, we were all doing things for this town, and it was terrific.
Thank you, counselor. Our default is to say yes, and I appreciate those examples. But in 1924, our university, college at that time, two-thirds of it burnt to the ground. And it was the town of Bridgewater, the town, that saved us and helped us to continue to provide an education for our students during that time. That's what members of a community do for each other. That's what friends do, we're there for each other, and we'll continue to be there. Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
The, my, my son went to Bridgewater State University, and he got a very good education there, so thank you for that. Doing the town's business, I would like to know how much water, in terms of gallons, does the university actually use? And what is the percentage of the town, towns' water that goes to Bridgewater State University? I'd like to know those kind of facts.
I think we can provide that to the town manager. Please know, though, that the water we use, we pay for.
Yes.
And, but, we don't take for granted how important that water is as a resource, which is why the entire institution, over the past 15 years, has converted, as I said in my comments, all of our fixtures to be less water flow, because we want to return that water back to the institution.
Which is admirable, yes.
Back to the town.
Yes.
But I don't know offhand, but that's something we can work with the town manager.
We'll address that later in the town manager section. So we're good for it.
Okay. And also, the boots-on-the-ground meetings, are we counselors invited to that?
That would be up to the town manager. If you want to be, that would be totally fine with us. You know, what we normally will do is, you know, for move-in, for, well, we don't have Spring Fest anymore, but in the, in the spring, when we do have activities for students, usually in the fall and the spring, we get together to make sure that everybody knows what's happening. And then, of course, for Fall Fest, you know, for the business festival, to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Does it just concern festivals or other businesses as well?
It's, I give updates on our budget, I give updates on our enrollment, pretty similar to what I just did.
Okay.
For the council. I'd be very, it would be up to you if you want to sit through those meetings or not. I will provide lunch, and it's always good conversation.
Well, I'm a curious person, and I'd like to be there.
But if you do have a majority of your council, that does become a public meeting, that's a different issue.
Yes, okay.
Any further?
One last question. Constituents have asked if your students who are about to graduate could work as interns to do their internship in the BR school system. That's what a constituent has asked about, so.
More than half of the teachers in the Bridgewater Random School System went to Bridgewater State, more than half. So yes, they already do that now. We have a very close partnership with everyone in the school system, including Ryan Powers. But in addition to the, to the school side, we also provide internship opportunities on the town side. And I know that we've had interns here in Town Hall as well, because we have many programs in addition to education that our students would benefit from, as would the town.
Being a curious person, can you tell me what some of those other internships have been?
So we have a master's in public administration program, so that's where a lot of people who want to become town managers go for, to be, to be prepared. So we'll have interns in the town manager's office, but we also have a GIS, Geographic Information Systems program. So it's a perfect opportunity to work with a town planner. So when you're really looking at zoning and you're looking at some of the bylaws and the utilization, we also have a biology program. So our students, many of our students are experts on wetlands and that type of thing. But to be honest, it really covers the gambit. Our newest program, which I know we've worked very closely with the county in regards to, is cybersecurity. It's our newest program. We've already done some training for the town through the county. And I would love to see some of our cybersecurity students do some work in the school system and with the town, because truly, really, we're all under attack every single day. And that kind of a skill set is hard to find.
Thank you. Ashawn, did you have anything?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the donation and also for the information you provided. We get a lot of questions about what the university does do, so having you come up and address some of those and provide even more information for the public is great. So I look forward to hearing more from our town manager as well, and the connection that we have to the college. So I just wanted to just say thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, thank you all. We're now moving on. We do not have any proclamations. We're now moving on to Citizen Open Forum. Due to Massachusetts' open-meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone may comment at this time for up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Don't start the clock yet. I just want to show Fred Clark that when I got up today. I got my BSU shirt on, and I've been a proud faculty member full-time, now retired for 46 years, I think, so. I love Bridgewater State. Thank you, counselors, for your service, as Mr. Clark mentioned. I'm Sam Baumgartner, 60 Short Street. I see that the appointment of Philip Nichols to the DEIB Committee is back on the agenda for tonight's meeting. I certainly hope there will be a vote for approval to bring the committee up to its required minimum of five. The vote to deny it at the previous meeting was due in part to what appears to be certain counselors not supporting the existence of and need for, for this committee. Based on my observations over several months, it also seems there is some opposition to the mere use of the words diversity, equity, and inclusion, which have taken on a negative connotation in the Trump administration and which, for some, have taken on a similar aura here in Bridgewater. Frankly, I don't want you, our leaders here in Bridgewater, to have anything to do with the negativity coming from Washington and certainly not allowing ourselves to be held hostage to offensive executive orders or threats. The DEIB Committee was formed a few years ago after the George Floyd incident, which led to a nationwide reawakening in the many social injustices and prejudice which clearly still exist in America. Here is what I have shared with others about DEI. It's about allowing qualified, competent individuals to be given a fair shot to participate in what has often been a, quote, "rigged game," a game which keeps marginalized groups, people of color, the disabled, LGBTQ, or those of low socioeconomic groups on the bench. Rather than giving preferences, DEI provides opportunities for those who haven't had them. It's about casting a wide net in hiring. It's about those marginalized groups wanting to be seen, to count, to be represented. It's about fairness and justice in order to overcome bias and prejudice, which, as I stated, is clearly still alive and well in America. It's about creating a culture of inclusivity, a culture of belonging. If you are a white, straight person, you have considerable privilege in this world. If you are not white, not straight, and yes, not male, look at how long it took to get women's rights, you have far less privilege. DEIB initiatives aim to reduce the disparity in privilege. I also want to hearken back to the Welcoming Resolution, which was defeated or tabled earlier this year. It would be hard to convince others that Bridgewater is a welcoming committee when people post a petition with the headline, "Bridgewater Stands Against DEI." Last paragraph, I have much more to say about DEI, but I'll stop for now. In the meantime, committee appointments for DEIB should be sought and supported, and councilors should communicate and collaborate with that committee and give it some time as a full committee to develop its focus and pursue its vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to talk about the TIF. While I realize that a yes vote, I know you're going to advertising, is for designation of a TIF district at 60 to 86 Broad Street, doesn't grant the developer that currently owns it a TIF, it is most certainly going to open the door. It's very interesting that a TIF district is being proposed after a developer actually purchased the property. My understanding would be, or I would thought, that it would already be a TIF district before someone actually purchased it. I have asked a few times who actually initiated this TIF district request, but I've never received an actual answer. And it, you know, was it the developer? Who was it? It just would be nice to know who actually brought this up. So we'd appreciate an answer. Again, I've said this before, anyone who purchases a property should already know what's expected on that, what's expected, what the property conditions are, what the potential taxes would be, and what is allowed there before they actually purchase it. No one, commercial or home builders and owners, should expect the town to change zoning, districts, et cetera, to accommodate them. Slight variances can be allowed, but not a whole area of property. What you see is what you get. If it's allowed on Broad Street, will, or could there be other areas in town looking to request a TIF? I haven't received any idea of that. You know, or would this be the only area that's requested? I would appreciate an answer. I don't feel Bridgewater will be hurt by not having TIFs. TIFs, as far as I can tell, benefit the developer only, especially now with our financial woes. I just don't understand why this is even considered at this time. I know you're not voting on allowing a TIF for this particular developer at this time, but it's mentioned in the ordinance that you're voting on, even including how many jobs it could possibly do, how many units and et cetera, you know, what it creates. If this is to vote just on allowing a district, why is the developer, current developer, even mentioned in this ordinance or proposed development? I don't think it should even be in there if that's all you're voting on is a district. So I don't understand that. So please do not allow a TIF. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Fizell-Curley, Atkinson Drive. I just wanted to really quick clarify, or try to clarify something. As a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee, two different reasons were given to us about the last gentleman who was not appointed. I personally have a very different opinion than most of my other council advisory. I'm not a fan of the particular committee, but it does exist in Bridgewater. And if it exists, and people are willing to step up and do something in the community, I don't think we should be disallowing them because we don't like a particular committee. On the other hand, if it was because of a resume, I also want to clarify that as far as the Citizens Advisory Committee has been told, it has never been a requirement for a resume to be submitted. The applications there, they come before us, we do a fairly, I think, thorough job of vetting them, and then we either not approve, my apologies, we either recommend or don't recommend. Then it comes before you guys. Again, I'm not, you know, Sam spoke eloquently, I disagree 100%. However, it still exists, and if it exists in the town, it should be given the opportunity to do what it, they think it needs to do, and the people that are stepping up to volunteer, as all of you know, there are not enough in this town or any town that does that, they should be given the opportunity and not sit through an interview, you know, come up with an application, and kind of be embarrassed when he's just not appointed, for whatever reason it was. Either way, the clarification has to be made, and we have to figure out and make sure that we're on the same page.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Keith Yule. I'm 10 Fieldcrest Drive, and I'm the chairman of the CAC Committee and a resident, proud resident of Bridgewater. Lisa and I work on a lot of things together, and we're on the opposite side of a lot of things, but we found a way to work together. I too was disappointed to see the vote for Mr. Phillips. When we interviewed him, he was, he was very eloquent. His professional and business background and education qualified him. And we put that in our recommendation that you all were able to read. I don't see where anything on a resume could have changed our recommendation or changed how you guys would view that candidate. You know, you talk about DEIB, and one of the big things that I've learned, and I've learned being on the CAC about DEIB, and I thought I knew a lot about it because it's very important to me. But what I didn't realize was that the chairman of the current DEIB of the town came through you guys, and you guys approved him. Some of you might not have been on the board at the time, some of the new members, but he taught me a lot that I didn't know that day that we interviewed him. He's a veteran. He's a veteran that served his country and was awarded the Purple Heart. Actually, one of the youngest people I've ever met who was awarded a Purple Heart. And when he came back from his service for our country, he was disabled due to the injuries that he, that he incurred while he got that Purple Heart. And it was DEI programs that he utilized that allowed him to have mobility in his life, and he flat-out set it. It helped him keep his apartment, it helped him get his job, you know? And if you look at his application, and it should be in your record somewhere, you know, I asked him, why do you want to be on this committee? And that's what he said. He said, because as a veteran, to save a veteran, I got help from DEI to let me live. And also in his thing, he said, I don't want to educate people. DEI is not only about race, it's not only about gender, it's not only about sexual orientation. Those are people that absolutely, those are parts of that that come through it, but it's about anybody in our world, anybody in our town who needs help. And where do they go? They come to you guys, they come to this committee. This committee's not going to make law. This committee's going to come to you and make recommendations, just like the CAC does, just like all the committees come. You're the leaders. You ultimately are the ones that will make decisions, you know? But to just deny this so that it can't function, just is not what Bridgewater is all about. It's not what local politics is about. We don't have primaries. We don't have Democrats and Republicans that get, then get voted to this table and sit around here. We voted to you because you're leaders that we trust, leaders that are going to do the best thing. I know you're going to kick me off real quick. Will do the best thing for this town. I have been on the opposite side of some of the greatest leaders in this town, Herb Lemon, Mark Oleary, Mary Beth Lawton, Scott Pitta. I've been on opposite views of them many, many, many times. But the thing I respected most about them is, I always thought that what they were doing was what they thought was best for this town, not what was best for their political views, not what was best for their personal views, what that did best for this town. And that's what I hope, and I, and I hope we get that from you as leaders, that you simply say to yourselves, okay, let me think about this decision, I've been given this responsibility, let me do what's best for the town. And that's what we need, especially right now. So I thank you for your service, I respect you for stepping up, you know, but this just should not have happened. Thanks. Thank you.
Frank Souza, 596 Main Street. I'm here to discuss several things. One, of course, is a TIF. But the other one is the fact that this council, along with a board, when the ADU state plan came into town, they changed it, okay? It originally said, if you had a single-family residence, or if your property was singly-family zoned, you could put an ADU. Town changed it so that if there was already a two-family on it, you could not. I have 7.3 acres of land completely enclosed, partly by 280-foot strip of land along the street, owned by the town, by the town, so I can't get in. And I'm trying to put an ADU. I have a garage with a second floor on it, where I had my hobby shop. It already has water, already has electricity, and it already has sewer since the day it was built. I wanted to put an ADU up there. That committee changed it, this council approved their change. So here they go, let's put these big corporations into huge amounts of apartments, give them big tax breaks, but a guy who's 79 years old, who's struggling to pay everything, I lost my house in a fire, by the way, and had to rebuild the whole thing from scratch, okay? And it isn't very easy, and things are pretty tough, and we were looking for that ADU to help us. And I got the bill today, a letter today, saying that we're going to be spending over $100 million for water and sewer in the next five years. How are we going to be able to afford it? Drive around town and see how many houses are up for sale. And here's another point, when did you ever see a multifamily house in Bridgewater stay on the market for more than two months? Never, because the developers are scooping them right up. No more costing two months in this town. And I need that ADU in order to survive, because if not, I may have to sell my house and get the hell out of Bridgewater, because we're both retired and we can't afford it.
Thank you.
My name's Michael Dougherty, and I want to know what you guys are going to do about the traffic situation out there, about people walking in, walking across walks and almost getting hit by cars and trucks. I've been told, you guys said you've been working on this problem. Well, I've been here for eight years, living in this town. This is a problem that has to be solved right away, because if a little kid gets hit in a crosswalk, is that what you're going to do to solve it? When my little kid's going to die? Okay? The square is a problem. And I think your next town meeting, you should have the police department here to tell us exactly what they're going to do to fix this problem. I got a couple of suggestions. Have an undercover police officer sit there for about maybe four hours, pull people over, and tell them you just ran a yellow light with a pedestrian in that crosswalk. And when I went driving, driving is a privilege, not a right. So you have to obey the full traffic laws. The other thing is, Bridgewater State School, they provide a service that not that many people know about. They will drive a bus from their school to Brockton. Not that many people know about that. I use it all the time when it starts, and I hope that they keep it in service, and that other people use it. Because I use it, I think I'm the only one who uses it. And thank, that's the thing that they don't publish that much. I walk through the parking lot, I see them training new drivers to drive the buses, and I think it's a thing, I see it all the time, every year. And the only reason why I'm bringing this up, I have a blood clot, okay? It was in my hip, went to my lungs. So I underneath doctor's orders use crosswalks. To let you know, when I was younger, I was the biggest jaywalker there was, okay? And now, my doctor told me to use these. I'm on a couple of restrictions. No more roller coasters, no more riding my bicycle, no more driving for eight hours a day, and that's it. So if I want to live, I want to live, but I don't want to feel like getting hit. I almost got hit today going through those crosswalks by two 18-wheelers, okay? And the guys go like this. Sorry. Yellow light means prepare to stop, doesn't mean to run right through it. And I walk when I get to the white crosswalk to go across the street, and they still run it. So I want to know what you guys are going to do about this problem. And thank, I thank you, I thank everybody who showed up here, because I think a whole bunch of them are getting mad, because this is a problem that can be solved real quick by putting cameras up or putting flashing crosswalk things where we hit the button and the lights flash, and they tell people pedestrians in the crosswalks. I thank you for listening to me, and hopefully, when I come to the next town meeting, we can solve, we can work on solving this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. James Walsh, 60 Crescent Street. I wanted to start off just by thanking a few folks here. I wanted to thank Councilor Hunt for helping, you know, just back and forth some ideas with me. It's always a pleasure chatting with you and talking about the different ways we might be able to, you know, improve, improve the town, especially with the CPA and some of those other initiatives. I also did want to kind of add on to the bandwagon of thanks for BSU. I am, I am very interested in getting that information. I think it'll be really interesting to look at the numbers and really have a frank conversation there. But as somebody who, you know, learned to swim there, who went to that library that was mentioned, and learned really about a lot of the things that ended up kind of shaping my career at that, that library, as well as the opportunity at BR to do dual enrollment, which saved me like quite a, quite a bit of money in, in college, and, and helped me, you know, find my, my career as well. So big, big fan of BSU. And then also wanted to thank Mr. Casanova Davis. It was, I was really grateful for the office hours, for the chance to get to meet you and to speak with you more, and I really appreciated you taking up, you know, to do some investigation, especially with the exemption and some of the other items we talked about. So welcome and looking forward to continue working with you. Now that my Oscar, my Oscar speech is over, I wanted to just mention a few other things on here tonight. I know there's a lot of, you know, questions about the TIF. I personally have questions, too. I'd love to really get into the, the numbers there and kind of learn more and see what, what really is on the table there, what's the benefit, what's the, the cost to the town. So I'll admit, I'm not, I'm not the most knowledgeable, I don't know the most about that process. If tonight is the step that gets us to, to kind of getting that information, getting that data, getting that presentation, I'm, I'm interested, but, you know, we'll, we'll definitely, if it's a cautious, cautious, you know, support where we get that, that information, then can, can make an informed decision. Also wanted to just mention the, the town manager goals. I, you know, thank the committee for putting those together. I think that's a wonderful, really, really ambitious, but really, really wonderful list of goals. I don't want to hold it up, I know it's up for a vote tonight, so I don't want to, you know, ask for an amendment or anything like that. But I would ask that, when we actually implement that specifically for water use, that we don't just look at expanding the system, but we also look at kind of reducing our consumption, both for, you know, existing, existing water uses, and maybe even taking a look at our zoning ordinances, our different building codes, and seeing where we might be able to trim on the consumption. Because I personally am, I know we have to get more water, right? I mean, we're, we're out of it, but I'm very hesitant about this idea of borrowing it for other towns and kind of going into all of these agreements. So I'd like to see us reducing that consumption as well. And then finally, I just wanted to follow up on the affordable housing percentage. I know I mentioned this a couple of times this summer. I was able to get some numbers myself by, by going to the state. It looks like the last time the state got number, or the last time they published numbers from us in 2023, it was at 10.79%. So that's dropped quite precipitously from, from where we were with those initial, sorry, hurry up, from those initial figures, but 79%, if we go down, I'm sorry, if we go down 0.8%, we will be out of compliance, developers will be able to skip, skip us. You know, I think Mr. Cormier's been very patient. If we're, you know, if we build, I think it's 72 homes, or if we've built 72 homes since 2023, which I think is the case, we're out of compliance. You know, I think Mr. Cormier's been very patient. If we're, you know, if we build, I think it's 72 homes, or if we've built 72 homes since 2023, which I think is the case, we're out of compliance. So I think we really, really need to be tracking those numbers. I think we should be getting that information on a regular basis. And when every, you know, project comes up for approval, we should be looking at those. Apologize for going over, but thank you.
Thank you.
John Donahue, 261 South Street. I just want to, I was at the most recent ADHOC Tax Increment Financing Committee meeting last week. And I just want to thank the council members and the public who took part in that. There were some good questions asked. I want to thank Councilor Strigles for running the meeting. She was very welcoming and gave both the committee members and the public plenty of time to speak. So thank you very much for that. I also want to thank Council Ellenberg. I don't think she was on the committee, but she did attend on her own time. Not only that, but at the previous joint meeting with the planning board, the previous night as well. So thank you for putting all the efforts that you do into the town. And I definitely want to reach out to and thank Council McGrath. You know, you asked some very good questions at the ADHOC meeting. Not then, not just at the then, but, you know, previously, the spring, through the budget process and also when the representatives of the Water Department were here. I know that sometimes you get some, you know, pushback for some of the questions you ask and sometimes some curt answers. But it's only because you're answering, you're asking the right questions. And I definitely appreciate that. And I, you know, I'm glad I voted for you in the last election. It's one of the better votes I've made at any level. So thank you very much for what you're doing for the town. And just one, just going back to one of those meetings, it was back on March 4th, actually. And Azu and Jonas were here from the Department of Public Works. And they were talking about the water situation. And at one point, Jonas got up and he was asked what the water capacity was for the town. And he said, you know, "We're running everything we can. We're running everything we possibly can and just maintaining, just barely maintaining what the town needs for its usage." He says, "We're on the edge." And then the question came up from one of the council members. You can hear it in the March 4th meeting this year. "Do you ever meet with the planning board to voice your concerns about the water situation?" And he said, "Yes, I have voiced my concerns through the planning board. And on more than one occasion, I've said we can't support this, but yet the approval gets approved, projects get approved anyway." So what I'd like to ask tonight to the town is, is it so much, is the question really tax increment financing? Or can we even have the capacity to do these units? And, you know, I want to know and possibly even additional zoning for tax increment financing. And I just, I'm wondering, what has changed in the last six months that would permit this additional building to go on? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Donna Jewell, 50 Keith Place. Echoing what some of the others have said tonight, I'm here to talk about the TIF. But just before I do that, I saw the town manager goals are on the agenda for tonight when I reviewed that last week. And I was very impressed with the public meetings that were held, the one at the senior center and the office I was here. The one at the senior center was probably the best-attended town manager meeting that I have attended. And I've been attending the coffee with the town manager meetings for several years now. I mean, it was by far the best-attended meeting. So I thank you for that, and I'm glad to see that that's part of the continued objectives. But he's well on his way to achieving that. I am here to talk about the TIF. And I do fully understand that you're not voting on the TIF tonight, that you're just voting whether or not to move that forward to advertising, to have a public meeting. I had prepared a letter, but I didn't get it in in time for the Friday cutoff to be part of your packet. So I would just like to read it to you tonight. And then I'll submit it to Debbie to make it part of the public record. I'm writing to ask you to vote no on the TIF order that is in front of you this evening. I feel that our town is not in any position to give up even $1 in tax relief to help a developer bring more apartments to town. This subject has taken up hours and hours of the town council's time when you have so many other critical issues facing you that you need to deal with. The town's finances, water, roads, and schools need your time and attention way more than continuing to analyze a TIF for the use of constructing apartments. You each have generously volunteered so much of your time for the positions you hold. And your time and talents, in my opinion, should be used on the issues that are impacting the residents the greatest. As a resident, I myself have spent countless hours researching and analyzing this subject. And I can't even begin to imagine how much time you have committed to it individually. The town's time and efforts need to turn away from the TIF and towards the critical issues we are facing. TIFs for apartments should be at the very bottom of the priority list at this point in time. I've attended and viewed many meetings where the TIF was discussed. I followed this closely. The council says they did not create this idea. The CED department said at the last meeting, they didn't. Residents are clearly against the concept, so I don't know why we are investing so much time and energy on the subject. The residents voted down on an override a few months ago. Do you honestly think they want to give up tax revenue to bring in more apartments? I don't. The schools are crying for more funding, and there are rumors they will be asking for another override soon. We needed to dip into our reserves to send them more money, and we cut police and fire departments from hiring. That's a shame. How does considering a TIF even make any sense under today's conditions? We need every penny. We clearly don't have money to give away. We should be working on getting contributions from developers, not offering TIFs for the construction of apartments. I understand that the vote you are taking tonight is whether to bring this issue forward for advertising to hold a public hearing. That takes even more of your time, time that could be spent on other serious issues. Let's move forward and address the critical issues facing the town first. This topic should not be anywhere on your radar. The town needs you. We all need you to turn your time and energy to the critical issues facing Bridgewater. I respectfully ask you to please do the responsible thing tonight and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, good evening. MJ Spigot, 5 Lake Shore Center, Unit 1128. Also Chairwoman of the Finance Committee. I understand that the TIF item is on the agenda tonight. I would like to express concern that it was never brought to the Finance Committee for even any type of discussion, whether to even recommend that you folks go to advertise. We haven't even had any conversations about this item. So it is kind of surprising that where there is a financial aspect to it, it was not brought to the Finance Committee for any due consideration to give you any advice and consent. This causes me great concern as if there's a financial aspect to something in town, our committee should have it brought to our attention so we can at least have it in one meeting, even if it's just a basic general discussion about what's going on, so we can at least give you some advice and some consideration. I recognize there's an ADHOC committee that has been doing that work. But my committee has not met at all during the summer. We could have done at least some work and given you folks at least some input. And for that, I'm actually kind of disappointed and kind of extremely concerned that that didn't occur. So I would certainly ask that if you are considering to put in this publication tonight, think about, did you miss an additional step? Which we bring it to the Finance Committee to at least have us have a say in the matter as well. Now, I understand the folks here in attendance seem to be vehemently opposed to it. I will not give any type of view whether or not I'm for or against it, as I am only the Chair of the Finance Committee. But I will say this. Due consideration should have been given to all groups in the financial aspect of it. And frankly, I would have liked to have seen this come before my colleagues and my committee to have a conversation further for you and to be able to give you that advice. So, Mr. President, I would certainly ask that if you are going to have the consideration of this conversation tonight, please consider holding off and having the Finance Committee have some sort of conversation on it. Because frankly, us being disincluded from something this important and this financially significant for the community should have come before us at some point. I, again, implore you, Mr. President, members of the council, that even as the Finance Committee Chair, I know my colleagues certainly would have expressed the same similar concerns. And while I am only one member of a nine-member group, I think you should take that in consideration when you do have your conversation this evening. And frankly, I think my fellow residents here and fellow residents at home would greatly appreciate that. So with that, Mr. President, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak?
My name is David Moore, 54 Flag Street, Bridgewater. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things that were said tonight. Obviously, I'm here to speak against council action, positive action on a TIF agreement. I've sent you all correspondence, not before the deadline, but I sent it to you individually. One of my big concerns is that I feel as though the TIF concept or the idea has been brought forth by our Director of Community and Economic Development. He has sat here and he has said that when he was hired, he was told there were no infrastructure issues. We had water, we had sewer, and traffic was not a problem. Well, he went ahead with those ideas, and he developed his Vision to Reality Program. That Vision to Reality Program has come up with three projects. One project was recently approved by the planning board. It was reduced in size, but it ended up with four apartments on two tenths of an acre with no street frontage. It's on a dead-end alley. And it rapidly was turned over to an appeal. So it's in court. Mr. Cormier's project is moving forward. And the one on Main Street, I'm told, has been reduced in size. But the problem I see is Mr. Ruley should be focusing on infrastructure improvements that we all know, everybody in town, every time they turn on the tap water, every time they try going through the center of town. And the letter we got today talked about $150 million in infrastructure improvements without water and sewer. So I know it, sometimes we have to bring in a change agent, a third person, an outside person. Mr. Ruley could be that person. He's a hell of a salesman. But I feel as though he should be working on infrastructure problems, solving those infrastructure problems, giving us some ideas and so forth, rather than creating more units. So for that reason, I ask you to vote no. And I ask you to consider putting this on a referendum ballot in the fall to judge the, whether it be a binding or a non-binding referendum, just to judge the feeling of the people. Because we have no newspaper. We have the internet. And we all know where that goes. But I feel as though we should get, we should sample the feeling of the people. We did it with the override. We should hear what the people have to say about the TIF concept.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mike Flaherty, 468 Forest Street. I've had a business in town for over 50 years. What the town should be looking forward to, to supply TIF tax breaks for is to invite businesses into the town. They don't affect the schools. They use less water. They use less sewer. And if there's any tax incentives that should be put forth by the town, you should probably think about trying to get businesses in. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay. Thank you all for coming up tonight. Next, we'll move on to appointments. And I'll refer to our town manager for some info and clarification on this one.
Good evening. On the agenda is the resubmission of Mr. Nichols for the DEIB Committee. I just want to provide a little bit of information for the council. After the meeting, some more information was provided. A resume was submitted by Mr. Nichols. It was submitted outside the normal process. And so our office does have a resume for Mr. Nichols. So I'm asking for the council to allow me to resubmit the appointment. That resume is included in the packet. If you were to allow me to resubmit that appointment, then we could consider that appointment once again. That's after we've talked with our council there. So that would be the process regarding that. I'll talk a little bit more in the town manager report regarding boards and commissions, appointments in our process. But for Mr. Nichols, we do have a resume, and it's in the board's packet.
Thank you.
Would a motion be in order?
Motion. And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second? And do we have any discussion on, and this is just bringing the appointment forward. This isn't voting on the appointment, but it's to allow the appointment to be brought back forward. Any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, can we do a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Loretti?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to that appointment. Again, this is for Mr. Nichols, who was presented to us at our prior meeting. As our town manager explained, that resume was submitted with the application, but didn't make it to the CAC and did not make it into our packet. So do I have a motion for approval of this appointment?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion on this appointment now that we have resume in front of us?
Thank you. I was contacted by several residents that were disappointed and concerned about the council's impartiality about our own personal beliefs and how that could negatively impact boards, committees, and commissions. I feel as a counselor, my role is to do the work of the people. Our Citizens Advisory Committee does the work of the people by vetting those that come before us, before we even see them. What service are we doing to those that raise their hand if we tell them no? The last thing I want is for us to have multiple agendas for months on end with no appointments because no one feels like raising their hand because they feel like they're going to be scrutinized. So I am very much for this appointment. I was for it the last time. I'm for it now. I vetted Mr. Nichols's application based on what he had put on paper. I felt there was enough there to appoint him to the position. So ultimately, my vote will not be changing.
Thank you.
Yes. I will not be voting for this because I don't think that we need a DEI committee in our town. The many constituents that I've spoken to scorn the DEI committee. I'm sorry to say that, but they do. They think it's not beneficial to the town. I am of the view that we go for excellence and merit, regardless of any other criteria, any other individual status. So I will not be voting for this committee. I have nothing against Mr. Nichols. His resume is fine. My problem is with the committee itself.
Thank you. Any further comment?
I voted against him previously as well. I had residents reach out after that vote, and they appreciated a voice in opposition, especially to the committee itself. I know the committee is not on here. It's the individual appointed to the committee. But their concerns of tribalism and all kinds of other things within the town that a committee like this does bring forward. So instead of going back and forth on the DEI itself, we have an appointment for the committee, and that appointment was approved. And instead of wasting everyone's time with this, I think Councilor Murphy brought up a valid point. We either get rid of the committee or we appoint people that are approved and appropriate for it. So his resume was fine. I appreciated the resume being included. So it's, that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I was for his appointment, and I'm going to stick to what I've said all along about resumes. When you apply for a job, you submit a resume. I appreciate the work of the CAC. But we discussed this as a previous council and in this council.
But we discussed this as a previous council and in this council, that we wanted to have that. I had a very good conversation with the town manager. There's a nice form on the Whitman Town website. We can fill in the blank. It's pretty much a resume. This resume added a lot of facts to what he has to offer. So I'll proudly vote for this individual.
Thank you. Any further comment? And just for myself, our town manager will give us a little bit of an update later on about boards, committees, and commissions. And I agree with Sean. I think that we should look at certain committees that are either not at a quorum or perhaps ineffective due to a number of reasons. And I'm not sure exactly what the scope of the ability to do that is. We could check with our town attorney and our charter. So that's a part of a different conversation. The conversations that we are having here are people that have put their names forward and have been vetted by our CAC. Are they appropriate to serve on those boards and committees? And I think that's a decision that we need to make here tonight. So that being said, can I have a roll call vote?
Sure. Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes, with sadness that I wasn't here to vote the last time. I vote yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
And Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Okay, moving right along. We do not have any hearings. We do not have any licensed transactions. And we do not have any presentations. So we will move on to our town manager report.
All right, this is a good segue. Just clarifying a little bit about our process in terms of boards, commissions, and our appointment process. I have had several conversations with some of our counselors. I've looked, you know, I know this has been a request for resumes in the past. And I just want to just highlight our process, which is a little bit unique from other communities, communities like Whitman that was referenced. We do have a Citizens Advisory Committee. I've actually sat with them for several of those interviews. They're very deliberative in their process. They ask a lot of important questions. And it's a much more thorough process that's unlike a lot of other communities. Some communities, you just get an application, you forward that application, and it's approved before a select board or a governing council. There's a lot of work that goes into that. There's a recommendation submitted to the council. I've attended several committees since I've started here. A majority of them have not had a quorum. My process is I really think and I appreciate people giving their time to try to serve this community. I'm trepidatious about putting a barrier to that, knowing that, hey, some people may not have a resume. They may not feel comfortable doing that. So I've looked at requiring a resume. I've looked at putting an application that may be a little bit more thorough. However, I do think that is subjective. And I want to take the subjective out of here. I want to take this issue off the table moving forward. So I just want to clarify for the group moving forward. Moving forward, if someone's going to submit an application to serve on a board or committee, I'm just going to require the resume be submitted as part of that. I think that will address this issue. We won't have this issue anymore in terms of having resumes. I do acknowledge, you know, people giving their time, willing to serve our community is important to me. I know it's important to the council. But I think this addresses that issue moving forward. And I do want to appreciate the work that our Citizens Advisory Committee does. It's a very thorough process. I'm very pleased with the members that I have on there doing that process. So that's what I will do moving forward. A resume will be required as part of a submission.
Any questions? No. Okay.
Sorry, I changed my page here. Rainbow's Edge. There was a question about Rainbow's Edge. Just a quick update.
It's End, sorry.
Excuse me, Rainbow's End. I was looking at Rainbow's Edge. Thank you. Rainbow's End, excuse me. The state paid for the cleanup of that property. They paid for the LSP to do that work there. That is state-owned property. There isn't any other work that's going on there. I've spoken with AZU, spoken with our team, no other work, but that property has been cleaned up. All right. The next item is regarding BSU Water. I know that was a question that has been asked a couple of times. So we did just a quick, before Jonas had left, just a quick record of flow. I would say about 9%. BSU uses about 9% of our water flow. I plan on having a sort of presentation about our water capacity, et cetera, coming up in October potentially. And we can dive into some of those numbers a little bit further. But you heard from Mr. Clark about projections of how much they pay. But it's about 9% based on the average flow that we had. Okay. And then finally...
May I ask a question? How many gallons does 9% amount to? I'm just curious.
It fluctuates. I can, when we have that presentation, I'll give you the exact number there. And I think I will try to extrapolate a little bit more data. They took two surveys of specific times. It was like April and March. I want to get a little bit more information. I think when we do that, it'll be a little bit more informative.
Thank you.
Mark, do you have a question?
Yes, a quick question to you, to the town manager. So they're our largest user of water and sewer, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think I've highlighted that as well before. I know it's been asked a couple of times. I mean, if they weren't utilizing our water, the requirements, the infrastructure requirements, capital improvement are still there. The users would have to pay for that. So, yeah.
Thank you. They pay the highest amount, though, for water, right? Because they use the most?
Yes.
Okay.
And the highest rate as well.
Yeah, and particularly with the changes that we adopted with the water and wastewater service. They pay a higher rate, obviously, because they utilize more of the water and wastewater as well.
And just to follow up, the prison uses just our water, correct? Not our sewer?
At least, it's just the water.
Could you determine how much water the prison uses in addition?
I think we'll put that on the list. You can ask me for that and move forward. Yeah. And then finally, I had a question regarding the fire hydrant, the fire protection services for the town. This hydrant was removed because it was constantly leaking. It had been severely struck by vehicles several times. It's not a breakaway hydrant, so it was pretty expensive to replace it. Spoke with Chief Slacks. I spoke with our facilities director as well. Chief Slacks highlighted there's multiple hydrants around the town, around the town hall, 1 South Street, 37 South Street, so on, Grove Street, Bedford Street. They're all within 500 feet of the town. So he believes they're more than adequate to service us. But in addition to that, in our town hall, we obviously spent a lot of money to build this important building. There's multi-levels of fire protection here. There's dry, there's water. We have state-of-the-art technology to even pinpoint where a fire may start in town hall. So we feel town staff feels we're more than adequately protected without that hydrant. Specifically, when you account for the costs associated with, for even a replace that, it's upwards of $20,000 each time to replace the hydrant. So that's why we aren't looking to do that at the moment.
Thank you. Any questions or requests from counselors for a future meeting?
To you, Mr. President, to the town manager. Mr. Castenaw Davis, I know we have council training coming up. I was wondering if we could have it in the chambers here and if residents could come. Last time after we had a training, residents wanted to be here because the questions they asked me, the protocol, like some of them say, you know, I'm your boss, so I should be able to tell you what you can do tomorrow. They don't get the rules in some of the questions I get. So I'm not sure if we could have the residents here, listen to the training, maybe even ask some questions to clarify it. And that way, they understand how we run and why we run it.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have two, if we could add. Could I just add an update on paving, if possible, and maybe the use of our Chapter 90 money and where that stands, or what our current plans are with that? And then the second one would be on our downtown area improvements for crosswalks. If you could give a general update and where things stand with that. I know we went through several iterations of our meetings, including one at BSU for the town, about improving the downtown area. But so I just thought it'd be good to give an update to the citizens where things stand with that. That's it.
Okay. Mark?
On Council Murphy's request, I'd like to also invite the town manager to come to a CED committee meeting and talk about different community and economic development issues, maybe in conjunction with the Downtown Revitalization Committee. I'm just throwing out some ideas so we can be efficient with our time. And I would like to echo Council McGrath's comment as well. I would love to see it in the council chambers, and I would like to see it recorded so we have a good record of it, and we can go back and review it.
Great. Anything else? And we spoke offline, but I just wanted to, this will be addressed before our next council meeting, but on the topic of sidewalks, or rather, crosswalks, the crosswalk lines at the, on South Street School started today, and they weren't done yet. So if we could have somebody to look at that. But I'm sure that'll be addressed before our next meeting. But I just wanted to bring that up. Anything else, counselors? Okay. Moving on. We do not have any discussions. And we'll move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports from our chairs?
We'll be addressing it when we get to the order regarding town manager goals. But the Strategic Planning Committee met twice this past month to get these finalized. And like I say, we'll go over the details of that shortly.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Next up, we'll be moving on to legislation for action. First up is Order FY25-071, an order establishing a tax increment financing district for 60 to 86 Broad Street. We, of course, did a lot of work in our ad hoc committee, to which we'll have Counselor Strigles talk a little bit more about that. And tonight, we are looking to potentially refer this to advertising and then hold a public hearing. So I'm looking for a motion to approve, to, or rather, to refer to advertising and then have discussion.
So moved.
We have a motion, and then we have a second?
Second.
And a second for discussion. Counselor Strigles, did you want to start off with what you guys did in the ad hoc committee?
Sure. Thank you so much. So, excuse me, I have very bad allergies at the moment. So during our multiple TIF ad hoc committees, first of all, I'd like to thank the committee for your commitment during this process, both Councilor McGrath and Councilor Murphy, as well as Fred Chase and Dan Greenberg, for giving of your time. And when I ask for a meeting, showing up and making sure that we can always have purposeful conversations. And I'm glad that residents have felt that those conversations have been just as purposeful for you as they have been for us. We did bring this matter back as a committee. I felt that there were still some unanswered questions to kind of get our hands around what this looks like, big picture. I'm much more of a big-picture person than most because I feel that's the best way to answer constituent questions. And ultimately, we believe at this time that it is worthy of a conversation, an opening-door conversation, to get us to a point where we aren't necessarily saying yes to any agreement. That is months and months in the making, and if at all, if we even get to that point. But in order to get to that point, we need to establish the district, and we need to do things the right way. So we felt that it was best for the course of time and attention of the public to be able to have that public hearing and hear from constituents in council chambers, also hear from other counselors about their feelings regarding the TIF and just the district. So I just want to, as President Loretty started the meeting with, I really want to focus and narrow down on this is a district conversation. This is not an agreement conversation. No one has seen numbers. No one has seen financial impacts. No one has seen anything to that effect. We need to get to that point so that we can see those things. So I do want everyone to know that we're doing what we need to do to be in line with proper procedure and process. So we voted five to zero to recommend back to council to refer to advertising. And I would open it up to other committee members that are on the council, if you have anything else to add.
Thank you.
I'd like to add a couple things.
Sure.
I'm just wondering if this has gone down to our professionals for them to talk about the district and to look at all the zoning rules and regulations and to provide you information on what the district should include?
So during our last meeting, we did have that as a topic of conversation. It had been being floated on whether or not we needed to limit the parcels or if we should expand it to whether it's including the entire mixed-use area of our business district, adding in a flex or a transitional. The minute I saw the map, adding in a flex or a transitional doesn't seem to make a lot of logistical sense for us as a town and to create a tight district. It wouldn't really make a whole lot of sense. The best usage of that would be to have it be our mixed-use section, which basically runs Broad Street to Main on one side, Broad Street to Summer, from Hale to Stetson.
I do remember. I just wanted to make sure that our professionals are weighing in on this.
This was information right from Mr. Rulie. He was part of our, he was part of our meeting. At this point...
And the planning board?
The planning board. We haven't met with the planning board on this matter.
I think there are things, just from past experience, when you send something in for advertising, it costs a good amount of money. And then it comes back, and then you have to figure out what you're going to do with it. I've watched things like this happen before, where someone came to the council before they went to the planning board, before they had everything all figured out, and it was a mess, and it never got developed. And I worry for that. I think it's, I think it's very important to have this go down and get the recommendation from our professionals about what they think the district should be, and then talk about it and see why do they say that. Because if, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, if we don't have something that is going to be really considerably good for business in that area, I'm, I have to think that I'm going to be against it because we need business in Bridgewater. We need it desperately. We have housing in Bridgewater. I'm sure we can always use more. But that is a very basic area for us to have commercial development. We don't have a lot of territory for that. So I want to know, I would like to know, I'd like us all to know what our professionals think about that. How do they see it? And then, when we know what that is, then send it out for advertising, and then have the whole community talking about it. I just feel it's a little premature now. You've run, you've run great meetings.
Any other comments, counselors? Paul and Mark?
I'd actually like to propose an amendment if I could.
Okay.
I am on the committee, but based on what I've learned through my research and being part of the committee, the entire second paragraph that starts, whereas the proposed redevelopment project at 60 through 80 Broad Street represents an estimated $31 million private investment, including 77 residential units, over 6,200 square feet of commercial space, and the creation of approximately 50 new permanent full-time jobs, I would propose, I'm proposing that we strike that because in accordance to our meeting that we had last week, this project and all of its details are irrelevant to this establishment of the TIF district itself. So I feel like that information's irrelevant, and it's further complicating the process. And so I'm proposing to amend it. And then I have a question after that amendment, but I know that's on the table.
I'll second his.
Second. Any discussion on the amendment?
I would agree with that amendment. We had spoken a little bit about that during our meetings and did have certain potential changes to the full-time job aspect of that. So I do think to add clarity for all parties involved, it makes sense to remove that entire section.
Yeah, I concur as well. It doesn't seem necessary. And again, like we've been saying all night, that this is a creation of a district conversation, and has, it does have something to do with a potential project, but that's outside the scope of this discussion. And we need to keep this discussion focused on a potential district creation. So I'm in favor. Any further discussion?
Yes, please. The next, the third paragraph says, "The subject property is located within the Bridgewater Economic Target Area, the ETA, and so forth." So if we eliminate the paragraph about the property, then how does that go with the third paragraph, "The subject property is located in Bridgewater"?
Just to respond, actually, in the title of the order itself, it says, "The Order Establishing a Tax Increment Financing District for 60 through 86 Broad Street." So I still think that third paragraph is relevant in referencing that property.
Well, yes. And it references the property in the title, too. So you'd have to amend the title as well.
No, I don't want to amend the property itself. I'm just amending the language that specifically speaks to a project on that.
Also, I attended the Community and Economic Development Meeting last week, the CED meeting, and Mr. Rulie was present on Zoom. And he agreed that the state recommendation of more than 15 per acre, we'd have to go greater than that.
Let's keep this conversation...
we'd have to go greater than that, and the thirty, and the thirty per acre would be applicable in the district. And we're talking about the district.
Mark.
So I still want to know why we're creating a TIF district for one specific property in this town. And I have issues with that. The other, the other thing is the, in the citizen comment tonight, someone brought up, why wasn't the finance committee consulted? Because numbers need to be addressed. And I agree a hundred percent with Counselor Hunt about the planning board involvement. I think if we do this, all the things that Counselor Strickles mentioned that needed to be done, I think we need to look into those before we advertise it and do all that. Just saying.
Yeah, we, we still have an amendment on the floor, so any discussion on the amendment itself?
Yeah, I'm going to move to call the question on the amendment.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to call the question, which is the amendment itself. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
No.
No.
Two noes. Okay. So we're now, again, the motion, the current motion on the table is referring this as amended now to advertising. So what we did was we removed paragraph two, starting from whereas the proposed redevelopment and ending with the word and. We removed paragraph two. So now we could continue to discuss as amended, but you said you had something.
Yeah, if I could just ask one more question, maybe to our town attorney. There's no date on here, so if we do grant this district, is that in perpetuity or how, how long is that granted for?
Yeah, it is. So essentially, and we, we've actually reached out to the state on this, kind of in anticipation of this discussion that you're having tonight. The statute is a bit unclear under the new law, the Mass Leads Act. Because what it initially said was, when you develop this district, you send it off to E A C C, who then looks at it and says, yeah, this is the area that's appropriate for this district. So there's some indication that that part, that next step, no longer has to happen. So it may be that you all could just approve it, it goes into effect, and then you move on to the next part of creating an agreement if you want to or a plan. You don't have to do anything with it at that point. It's not a zoning thing. It's just, you've identified an area that you think is an area where someone could come forward with a project that you then could come up with a TIF agreement on. But we did reach out to the state because I did find some contradictory language relative to the prior statute and what they're saying the new Mass Leads Act actually says. I haven't gotten a response back. My initial response was, the state doesn't need to approve it after this part. But I, I kind of pushed back and said, well, the statute says this, so I just want to make sure. I certainly will report that to the council as soon as I have that information. But in terms of just adopting a district, it goes into effect. It, it's something that you can create a new ordinance saying it's no longer in effect. I mean, that, that's really your prerogative. The way that you amend ordinances under your charter is by ordinance. So you can put it in effect and you can take it out of effect and you can move down that process. The only limitations you have are is if you deny it, there's a certain amount of time before you can resubmit it.
And just because a district is created, obviously, an agreement has to come forward. Yes, so the fact that one exists doesn't mean anything other than an agreement can come forward.
That's right. There are many steps that happen after this, right? This is the initial step of saying, this is an area that we as a council have identified that may benefit from a project being here and getting this benefit, right? Tax incentive financing. That doesn't mean that a project that will ever come to fruition there. It also doesn't mean that the town will actually ever successfully negotiate something that is palatable to the town. So really, that's the first step. You're just looking at, this is an area we've identified, this is an area where we say, a developer can come in here. And usually it is with a developer and a specific project, just so you know. That is a very common way that TIFs work, where they come and they say, this is the plan. This is an area that's been identified, the state's okay with this area, the town's okay with this area, and now we've worked out this plan between the town and the developer, right? So the, the manner in which you're going about doing this so far makes a lot of sense. And I think you're not tied down to anything once you adopt this. It's only once you enter into an agreement, now the town is tied into it.
And this project is being built to the Form 8 code, therefore, this has no purview over the planning board?
No, this has, so thi- this is not a zoning ordinance. This would not get sent out to the planning board for any recommendations. This is to incentivize, because you as a council have identified an area that you think needs to be incentivized to be developed, right? That's essentially the first step in what you're looking at right now.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Mark.
So if this all moves down the road, goes to advertising, district is created, and then a TIF is actually granted. If it's granted to a developer, I guess this is through you, to the town attorney, is that transferable to another developer if it gets sold?
The TIF agreement?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if the pro forma TIFs are assignable. I would have to look into that. I, obviously, long before we negotiate a TIF with anyone, we can have that answer. I'm sure there's clauses that would allow for assignment. I don't know that the state is keen on that because it's usually based on the project itself and projects change depending on who owns the project. But certainly, that's something we can look into, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just to clarify for the public and through you to the town attorney to hopefully confirm this. So the process right now is that the council is responsible for establishing a district, which is what we're discussing tonight. The next step in that process, if, if it goes forward, would be for the town manager and the staff in the town manager's office in this building to develop and work towards an agreement. My question would be, if the town manager then takes it after the council to develop and work towards an agreement, if, if that were the case, what purview does the town council have then at that point? If, if any? Does the town manager negotiate that agreement? If an agreement comes forward, signs it and moves it forward, or how does that work?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just tell you, that's a good question. I think based on, you know, where I'm at and what I think, speaking with the team, and I, I would want to bring forth that agreement to the council and have the council chime in. I think this is an important, you know, agreement, a decision for the, the town. And I would want the council to, to, to weigh in on that. So that was what I plan on doing.
And then at that point, if we could, just a reminder, send to the finance committee, because I think at that point would be a good opportunity for them to weigh in.
We had discussed that, we would definitely do that. There has a financial impact at that point, so that would be something.
They would have, they would have to, right, look at it at that point.
Yeah, what's an agreement is proposed, we would set it to budget and finance and then finance it at that point. But we're just, we just haven't gotten there yet.
And I would anticipate, long before we even get through that part of the process, we're probably going to need to have some executive sessions and, because negotiating a contract, while I appreciate public transparency, negotiating contracts in public forums are not beneficial to the town.
Could I just ask again? Do we do all those things after we send it to advertisement? Or can we do those things before we send it to advertising? So that when the public comes in to talk to us about it, we actually know what we're talking about?
Everything we spoke about would be after we created the district, yes?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it probably logically makes the most sense to do it that way because then you know the area that you're talking about. If you're in that district and you're an owner, you have an equal opportunity to come to the town and ask for a TIF plan, right? That doesn't mean the town has to go along with it or come to an agreement. But anyone in that area, if they owned one of these parcels, could propose something. There's very specific criteria about what you need to look at and what, what you should be considering. And you all will have your own thoughts on what you should be considering, right? So, but yeah, that, that's down the road, that's next steps. You're just identifying an area. You're creating an overlay, for lack of a better term.
Got it. Any further discussion?
I'm going to ask one more time, just to confirm that we have the language correct. Any agreement that the town enters in this case would have to be approved by the town council?
I don't know that it would have to be approved by the town council, but what I heard the town manager saying, and I don't want to speak for him, was that he was anticipating having the town council approve this in concert with him negotiating this.
I absolutely will do that.
Yeah.
I have a comment, excuse my throat. I would like to see that the council gets this. The council determines policy. And our distinguished town manager executes the policy that we determine. Now, the way I see it is many, many, many constituents do not want to give money away. So I don't think we should be doing the district. I think we should vote it down now and go from there.
Did you have a comment, Sean?
Yeah, through you to the town manager. Similar to Counselor Murphy's question, you said weigh in, but I think that what we want to, what I may want to know and clarify is, is there an actual vote that takes place later on down the line on the TIF agreement by the council? If, at any point in any future scenario, something were to come across?
I don't, I don't know that there's anything that would limit him from allowing you all to have that say as well. I mean, it, he could delegate that, along with him negotiating the TIF, to the council to sign off on. I agree, policy is the purview of the council. Policy is what you're currently doing, right? Creating the district is the policy. Negotiating the agreement is not the policy.
Sure.
Of course.
You're, so what you're doing now is a policy determination. The next step is within the purview of the town manager and the town manager's staff to negotiate the agreement. Now, I've heard him commit it several times, that he's going to bring it before the council for a vote. So I don't think he has to, but if he chooses to do that, he certainly can.
Sure, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
Did you have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of concerns. In March of twenty twenty-five, Mr. Rulie gave a presentation and he showed the water and sewer capital expenses. And he asked how we're going to pay for this if we don't expand our tax base. So if we're going to give TIFs, I don't understand how we're going to come up with sixty-six million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand for our water thing. The other thing he did in this presentation was showed on Perkins. So Perkins is going to have a hundred and forty-eight union, units. And Mr. Rulie calculated that the, the impact, the annual impact on police would be fifty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight. Fire would be a hundred and three thousand, three hundred and sixteen. And that's for a hundred and forty-eight units. So this, Mr. Comey was only having seventy-seven units. So if I take, I have to divide it in half, because seventy-seven and seventy-seven is pretty close to one forty-eight. So if I divide the total impact of a hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and forty-four, I would come out with like eighty thousand, or eighty thousand a year, the impact that we'd have to spend on fire and police. So I'm bringing this up because if the TIF does go through, and I think it's appropriate to talk about the developer because the developer is asking us to make this TIF for his property. So, and he's done many presentations, it wasn't just one. He, he made presentations to all of us. And his, the first year, his tax that he would give to us is twenty thousand.
Well, let's just.
According, but according to Mr. Rulie, that would not cover even the fire or the police that would come because he did the annual thing. I have concerns about that, that we're going to be paying for the public things. And I know this is about the district, but we're doing it backwards. So we're looking at to make a district for the developer. We're not making a district to bring in developers. So we should be able to talk about his proposal somewhat before we do this.
Yeah, and just to speak to that, for me personally, is that it could be a percentage as low as, I don't know what the minimum percentage is to the maximum abatement, perhaps Sony knows better than I. But we can rely on our town manager to negotiate on our behalf and in our best interest to make sure that we are still benefiting. So we, we don't necessarily need to grant a hundred percent abatement for, you know, twenty years, I think, is the maximum. So I trust in, in our town manager to be able to negotiate on our behalf.
But it's out of our hands.
It sounds, it sounds like he's going to send it back to us for final approval, but yeah, the negotiating is.
He would like us to prove it, but we have no say in that.
I just would like to comment on Counselor McGrath's comments, which are that we will have all those additional expenses with the development, yet we are giving away money, tax money. So that is a negative on one side and an expense on the other side, and so the whole thing does not seem smart.
So I have one other question through you to the town manager. Mr. Rulie, and some, many residents have asked me, if we vote no to go forward to advertisement, what happens to this?
You asking me or the town manager?
Yeah.
Oh, if, if you vote no, it's stalled out. I mean, essentially, you're going to get to a point where you either move it forward or it just stays, right? Because you can't move it forward. So really, a no vote is a, you're not moving it along in the process.
So to move it forward gives all the residents a, a chance to voice their opinion?
No.
Yes, because then we'll have a.
In a referendum.
Public hearing. We would have.
I believe you're advertising for a public hearing.
Yeah, so if we move it forward, our residents will have a chance to take.
Yeah, if you have a public hearing, of course.
I just want to make sure residents know that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, we would, again, the motion on the table is to refer to advertising for a public hearing and it sounds like it would be October seventh, the last time I checked in with, with Debbie.
I don't know who to ask this question to, but if a developer gets a TIF within a district and saves whatever percentage, and I do not agree we should be giving any money back. We need the money for the schools. They save a lot of money, millions of dollars, then end up buying another property within the same district. Essentially, we'd be paying for the second property. Why a district? Why not a case-by-case property anywhere in Bridgewater?
This is only for these parcels that are mentioned?
I thought we took those out.
Being developed on that property.
Say again?
The bowling alley is not being developed.
No. Is, is the bowling alley including in this?
It is not. It is on there simply because an easement needs to be granted for the waste removal, the, the trash. That's the reason why it's on there.
Okay.
An easement needs to be granted when a project actually begins and a project is actually not begun yet.
Could we essentially be paying for that property to be developed?
I don't know the details.
They would have to enter into an agreement, right? So it's a, it's a case-by-case relative to each agreement. So just because you're identifying an area in which you want to say this is an overlay that you could ask to try to enter into an agreement with the town for a tax increment financing, doesn't mean that that will happen. The, the development itself has to meet certain criteria. And then the development itself, once it meets that criteria, then has to get approved and entered into the town. Because you created a district, doesn't place an obligation upon us to enter into any kind of agreement. The agreement has to make sense and it has to be suitable to you all. It sounds to me like the town manager wants you to weigh in and the town manager and the assessor. So I hear what you're saying, but I think the, the counter to that is that each individual developer comes forward to negotiate a TIF agreement. And it's that agreement that is what identifies each individual project, not the district.
I hope you get more information on the state approval part.
Yeah, me too.
It's really.
Just want to make one comment, I guess. I know we've talked a lot about finances and revenues this evening, and I feel like without passing this legislation tonight, we won't ever actually get those real financials or the real revenue for the town or cost of the town. I think we've seen some presentations that maybe were valid three, four months ago. We've never heard from our assessor here, we've never heard from the project as a whole coming together. What do the permit fees mean? What does the excise tax mean? What is the economic development of those seventy-seven units or however many units end up on this property to the other businesses in town? I think we got to take a holistic look at this whole thing, but we're not even at that point yet. And if we don't even open the door to look at this and see if it makes sense, then the town, we're not doing our jobs in economic development. And that property sits vacant, making fourteen thousand, whatever the current tax rate is, and we never actually bring the revenue into our schools or to our fire department. And so for me, it's not about the agreement, which is why I asked to strike the specifics about that. about that project, but it's about opening the door so that I can understand what those numbers look like. And if at the end of the day, the numbers don't add up and this doesn't make sense, I would have hoped our town manager would have caught that. But if not, it sounds like it'll come back to our council to be able to determine that. So for me, I want to see the numbers accurately presented by our own people in the town to know that it benefits Bridgewater before shooting this down. And so I understand and I hear people in the audience, but I feel like as a counselor, I wouldn't be doing my due diligence without seeing those numbers and seeing what the benefit could be to Bridgewater. And if ultimately, again, it didn't work out that way, then the expectation would be that I would vote no personally to live in a town where we'd be quote-unquote "giving back money." I think I agree with those folks. So I just wanted to state that because I think everything Councilor McGrath mentioned in terms of costs initially sounds like, hell no, why would we vote for this? But I want to see the actual numbers, and I want to see it either make sense or not make sense before making a final determination.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I have one. I agree, Paul, with what you said. The thing that concerns me is we're actually making the district where the developer already owns the land. If he didn't own the land, I'd say, yeah, let's go for it. But now that he owns the land, as soon as we approve this district, he owns the land, it's out of our hands, it's out of the hands of the residents, and it's just the town manager. No offense, I'm just saying. And so that's what concerns some of the residents, that then we lose control. If it was no one owned that property, I would go for it. But because we're saying, yeah, this is going to be a district, it automatically qualifies those, and here, and there's an owner. So we can't take, you know what I mean? They're connected now. The district is connected with the developer. Whether we, unless, if he didn't own it, he would come towards us to ask about the TIF, and then you don't have, like, buy that land. That's what's concerning.
Thank you. Through you to Attorney Rollins. It's my understanding that if we were to move forward with this district being located just to these parcels, that in the future, if it was to pass, we would be able to amend it and create a larger district in the future, correct?
Of course.
So one of the main reasons why the ad hoc decided to bring it back with just these parcels were this is, this is the first area that our town, first of all, this is the first time our town has ever thought of doing something like this. So it's very difficult to say that we would have just had this idea to create this district and then had all these developers wanting to come in and do it. I don't, I think that's, it's a great idea and a great concept, but it's not as much of a reality in real estate development. People don't love asking for TIFs. They want to be able to do projects that are revenue-seeking for both the developer and a town. However, if we were to move forward with this, and one of the reasons why the committee recommended to keep it to these parcels was so that the council could then decide as a council, do we want to then bring this back afterwards and create a larger district based on larger-scale studies of other areas of town that might be best suited for this district? Whether it's the mixed use, like I mentioned before, whether we add in some of the flex, whether we add in anything transitional, which I am very much against, I'm also against the flex. However, if it's a council decision to make it larger, at that point in time, we've had the time to study it, just like we've had the time to study these parcels. So that's why we did come back with a smaller district versus the whole mixed-use district.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'm just going to go back to where I started, because I don't know why we have to send it to advertising to continue to have discussions about it, call in the finance committee, let them weigh in on it, and call in the public and let them start talking about it before we spend the money to send it out to advertising. It just seems to me that we could do some more of this initial work, although I know the committee did great work, and I think you really did, but it just seems like there's more that could be done, that could be explained, before we say, okay, we're going to move forward with it. It just feels like there's a lot left out there.
Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, if this goes through tonight, it goes to advertising, and then we have a public forum where the public can speak on this on both directions and both sides of it, and then we take a vote from there on whether or not we finalize this. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, this is still an intermediate step. We still have one more step.
Okay, so...
Could I just make one suggestion? Just, I believe you already voted the amendment to strike paragraph two.
Yes.
Just looking at paragraph three, where it says, whereas the subject property is located within the Bridgewater Economic Target Area, ETA thereby qualifying for local and state... I may recommend that you change that, just because I haven't heard back from the state, and instead that says, whereas the town council has identified the subject property is located within a Bridgewater Economic Target Area, and just leave it at that. Because I think it's more about identifying the area than making a statement such as it qualifies for these things, right? I don't know that you want to be that definitive. I don't, I don't think it furthers your order, and I also don't think it really serves us any purpose, especially in negotiating any potential TIF agreements, so...
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
And a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, so now we're back again to the motion to refer to advertising. Any further discussion? Okay, just to speak for me personally, when I moved to this town a few years ago, drove down Broad Street, I saw this dilapidated property, and I thought to myself, what an absolute shame that this area of town is. We should do something to incentivize somebody to develop it. And here we are. And we now have an opportunity to open the door for a discussion of potentially working collaboratively with the developer, you know, step-in-step, to do something that's going to benefit everybody involved. I'd love to bring my daughter over there and, you know, eat at a nice restaurant after a Little League game or softball game. I didn't live here in Bridgewater. When Friendly's was open, I bet her heard that was a lovely thing to do. And we don't have a place in town to do that right now. There just aren't a lot of places. And this is an opportunity where we have somebody who is potentially interested in this area. And I think that we wouldn't be doing our diligence as a council by identifying areas of opportunity to develop downtown if we weren't to at least consider the potential of moving forward with this option. So those are my thoughts. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one more thing to add. If this moves forward to a public hearing, I would encourage the public to come out. I think that this is a big decision. This is the public deciding, just like they did previously, on whether or not to raise their taxes, to give tax breaks, and with the concept being more development in town. And that is something that we do need to weigh back and forth. So when a hearing platform or format, I would like the town to show up and voice those opinions that evening, and this gives the opportunity for everyone to do their due diligence, bring what they want forward. And the council is going to be responsible to make a choice from there if this moves forward from here. So I think having the public input, while I've been contacted by multiple residents about this, with some good information, I would like to offer this up in a public hearing format for residents to come and speak their piece and let us know how they feel, and then move on from there.
Thank you. Debbie, may we do a roll call vote on this one, please?
Sure. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
Ms. Strigils?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Loretti?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Abstain, please.
Mr. Murphy?
Point of information. I thought you can abstain.
Abstain is a no, but he would have to talk about why he...
Yes, I have a property that borrows his property, so it's a conflict.
So you filed a disclosure on that?
I've checked with the State Board of Ethics.
Yeah, he doesn't need to, he's not voting on it. But the rules...
Been told multiple times that I can't abstain on a...
But in the past, you have to give your reason, and it's actually supposed to be determined by the council president if it's a good reason to abstain. And I think a conflict of interest certainly would qualify.
Okay, I just didn't know why.
Yeah, I do think he has to, he has to talk about why he's abstaining.
As for clarification?
I'm just looking for clarification. We're voting on the general issue, right? Not just on something Mr. Kennedy's...
Sending it to advertising.
Okay, sending it to advertising. I just want to make sure that...
Yeah.
Okay. Are we clear on my abstention?
Are you done?
Any other questions?
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
No.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, yes. Three no and one abstained. You can go to advertising.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody. Motion passes. Okay, next up, Legislation for Action Order FY25-074, Town Manager Goals. The Strategic Planning Committee voted 3-0 to recommend, and I will ask Dr. Perry to introduce this list, but we do have some amendments.
Joe, just wrap this for a second. Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So this order was submitted to the council by Councilor Murphy, so we used his order and set up for the Town Manager Goals as the backdrop. Everyone has in your packet the updates that the Strategic Planning Committee made on those goals, mostly adhering to, you know, a lot what was within the substance of the order. We just add a little bit more detail and some specific dates for some of these goals to be accomplished by. Everything's pretty, again, pretty well laid out. And unless anyone has any questions, I'll let the amendments stand as they're written.
Do we have a motion to make these amendments that were in our agenda packet?
So moved.
Second.
And second. Any discussion on the amendments?
I just want, would like to say that it was a pleasure to work on this with both Councilor Perry and Councilor Loretti, and coming to what we believe is both a fruitful list of goals, but also a realistic list of goals. And it also, the nerd in me brought me back to my time at the Leadership Institute at Bridgewater State. Being very goal-driven and being able to build goals for other people is something that I enjoy doing. So I definitely enjoyed this process, and I hope that our town manager sees the goals as attainable and a great jumping-off point to a great working relationship.
Thank you. And that was a pleasure to work with you as well. Any further discussion on the amendment?
I just want to add, to let the council know, so we'll add these amendments basically as a checklist on the back page of the review sheet. That's the standard form that we use for the town manager. So you'll be able to itemize and, you know, see if all these goals have been met. So they'll be included with that review sheet.
All those in favor of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now that we have those amendments in, I'm looking for a motion for approval and a discussion.
So moved.
Motion and a second. So any discussion on the, on the order as it's presented now with the amendments?
Just a quick comment. I'm excited that we have these down in writing, and I appreciate the work that the Strategic Planning Committee put in to get these done and updated. I appreciate that for the first time in what seems like a long time for the council. We have some clear expectations for our new incoming town manager with some specific dates and things that they have to accomplish. And so hopefully, this makes it easier on the review period that'll take place later on into next year for the town manager after the first year. But this gives us measurable outcomes to be able to review him against. And so hopefully, folks had a chance to review this. If you didn't see it prior to this meeting, I would advise you just go back into the packet and look at these goals, because I think they span a wide range of things that we talk about almost on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. And so again, thank you to the folks that helped update this on Strategic Planning Committee, but this is an entire council order here that we'll all be utilizing later on in the year to give a review of our town manager.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
In our talks when we were developing these goals, we were really mindful of the dates. We really wanted to make sure we weren't overloading dates in certain months and underloading dates in others. We wanted to have balanced agendas as we move forward, and we felt that that was going to be the best way to have purposeful conversation, both with the town manager and having the town manager set those goals, but also with the public. So we really wanted to make sure that we weren't stacking too many things in one fell swoop. We wanted to kind of have things go a little bit more streamlined as the year goes on. So we were really thoughtful when we thought of most of these dates, if not all.
Any further discussion?
I have one thing.
Yeah?
I want to thank the committee. I watched you guys. You did a really good job. You really picked it apart, making sure it wasn't going to strangle them, gave them legwig in areas. So thank you guys for doing it. It came out really good.
Thank you. Anything else, Sean?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you guys for working on it. This pretty much covers the majority of the issues that we heard in choosing a town manager at the beginning of the year, and I think this covers a lot, so good job, guys. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'm biased because I worked on this, but I think that we did a great job on this one, guys, and I appreciate your work. I encourage residents to read through it. We hit upon drinking water, we hit upon, you know, roadway improvement, economic development, community engagement, efficiency within how town hall and town employees operate. So it's all, it's all in there. Your voices are being heard, and I think that we addressed these, all of these concerns, most of these concerns, pretty thoroughly in this. So with all that being said, did you have anything, Mark?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind people, we had a constituent that came tonight that talked about on the water use in terms of expanding. He also suggested that we, you know, talk about putting something in there in terms of consumption. And I think that's a really good idea that maybe we might want to consider down the road.
Sure. If not, any further discussion? We'll go for...
Just have a little bit of levity. I wish you'd add to it a magic wand. But since you didn't, I'll vote for it anyway.
All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, last up for Legislation for Action, we have Resolution FY26-001, Town River Landing Phase 1 Improvements. We introduced this at our last meeting, and we did keep it at a council level. Thank you. So again, for those that haven't had an opportunity, the master plan from, Alice started from Fire for Effect, it was in our last agenda packet. Is it in here? Yes, it is. So take a look at that. Very, very exciting stuff. What we're looking to do here is essentially approve a resolution, asking our town manager to apply for CPA funds through the CPC to help get Phase 1 of the master plan done and funded and then completed by the spring. It would be, I think it's an aggressive timeline, but it's, I think it's a very worthy endeavor. So again, this is a resolution asking for him to fill out an application and get that before the CPC. And it sounds like there is a lot of enthusiasm about this at the last council meeting, so I'm looking forward to your hopeful support. Looking for a motion for approval and a second for discussion.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion on this one? Okay.
Sorry, I'm just talking so much. I'm going to go ahead and vote for it, but as far as the CPC, from my knowledge of the CPC, that's town money. And his agreement with the town, his legal agreement with the town for this property makes it impossible for him to use any town money to build or to improve on the property. So I'm going to vote for it because I think number two will work, so, but I just thought maybe we should know that before...
Yes, this is for the town to apply on the town's behalf. The money would go to the town, it wouldn't go through the foundation.
So the town would apply for the money from the CPC?
Yep.
Not him?
No. The town would apply on the town's behalf to improve that area.
They continue to grow. I mean, we're going to have our first car show here. He's going to do it on that property. So even though he's waiting on this, he's bringing in more businesses, more activities. They're constantly growing, and I think this is the greatest thing for our town.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Town Manager Casanova Davis.
Yeah. I think this is an important thing to clarify a little bit, is that this is town property, and if we do pursue this and we do look at this, I did tell this to the council president, you know, we have to go through a procurement process. This isn't just allocating funds to an organization. So this might take a little bit of time. I just want the council and the community to know this is an important thing, an opportunity for us. I definitely will explore it, but it's a little trickier because of the current agreement. There's a town procurement process. We're governed by Chapter 30B. It's not just apply and transfer funds. I just want people to know that. It does make it a little more convoluted, but we will explore it.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any old business. We'll move on to new business. Order FY twenty-six dash zero fifteen, laying out and accepting a private way. I think Councilor Kennedy introduced this one. I'm not there yet. I'll ask Councilor Kennedy to introduce this one for us.
Yes, there's three of these on here. They all have to do with the same area in town. They're private ways. So again, these are just moving to the planning board so they can discuss it and move further from there. There isn't really anything complicated here. It is a development. It's been ongoing. It's, it's a pretty nice development in town. So this just increases the, the access.
Thank you. So yeah, we're looking for a motion to refer to the planning board, and I didn't say it initially, but this is for Old Field Road. And as Sean said, we have got three. The next one we would do, would be for Timberlane and Urbex Circle. So do we have a motion to refer to the planning board?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Didn't the planning, we had this before and we referred to the planning board. Did they amend it, or is it because we changed who was introduced by, was Chase before, now it's you?
I...
Johnny. I'm sorry. That wasn't supposed to be another one.
I know, I, I got these as they sit right now. These were not amended prior to, to me getting them. They have had different things from Oilfield on different planning board agendas, and I did look back to the last few months of agenda items. Some of them have pushed off further down the line, but these are just the, the private way access, which is laid out in there. It seemed pretty straightforward to me.
No, I was just curious why they were back to us, because I thought like last, no?
It seems like they've had multiple things that have had to come before us to then go to the planning board to be voted on, then come back. So it, it seems like there's a lot of development going on there from what I picked up on and read through some of them, so.
Yeah, I saw a lot of drainage and stuff, and I wasn't sure if it was just amendment. All right, thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion for referring to the planning board? Yeah, okay.
Sorry, Councilor Kennedy, for talking over you. I just had a question through you to the Town, to Town Council. I just feel like with all the talk about how behind we are in road paving and water consumption, what happens if we don't approve accepting a private way?
Stays a private way. We don't plow it. We're not obligated to provide the town services to the way.
We, we also, just to add to that, we also don't, and it's a negligible amount, we also don't get the Chapter ninety funds for it as well.
I'm sorry?
We don't get Chapter ninety funds for it as well.
It's not counted towards our mileage, the Chapter ninety funds? We...
Okay, so we're still looking for a motion for referring to the planning board?
So moved.
And then second. Any further, any discussion on, on referring to the planning board? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Same thing. We have, again, now with Order FY twenty-six dash zero sixteen, laying out, accepting a private way for Timberlane. Sean, I imagine it's a similar, similar situation?
Yes, it's the same development, similar situation. I don't really have a lot to add from the last one.
Okay.
I, it was your question about the, the private way and the plowing and things like that. It appears to me that these are low-traveled roads, so I don't think they would require as much maintenance as another road in town. Maybe that would be a cut-through or something, so it's a good question to ask, though.
So do we have a motion for referring to the planning board in a second?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. One more. Same thing as the previous. Order FY twenty-six dash zero seventeen, laying out and accepting a private way, Urbex Circle, looking for a motion to refer the planning board.
So moved.
And do we have a second? And a second? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next up, Order FY twenty-six dash zero eighteen, acceptance of donation from the Howard Foundation. I'll ask our Town Manager just for a little overview on this one.
This is annual donation from the Howard Foundation, nine thousand dollars that goes towards the COA. The COA can utilize it for a variety of things. They use it for programming, entertainment supplies, but the one requirement associated with this donation is that it has to be prioritized for Bridgewater seniors.
Thank you. So looking to refer to, a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and the Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
So on the, on the letter that we have attached to it?
Yep.
Couple lines up. It says, "Next year, in order to be considered, you must submit the detailed description of expenditures, as we did not receive a detailed accounting this year." So we don't know what we spent on last year?
I spoke with a COA, COA Director about that. We, we know what we utilize it for. I think there was just, particularly because there was a change in staff and leadership. It wasn't forwarded along, but Courtney's aware, and they do have an expenditure list, and we'll make sure that it's forwarded along.
Yeah, because we'll lose that money if we don't send it in next year?
We talked about that. We've got it.
All right, thank you.
So again, do we have a motion to refer to Budget and Finance, Finance Committee?
We do.
Oh, we, we did, sorry. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Got you.
Got you, man.
Okay, next one. Order FY twenty-six dash zero seventeen, acceptance of donation to the Parks and Recreation Department, Ron Enos.
Zero nineteen.
What's that?
Zero nineteen.
Zero nineteen. Yes. So I'll ask our Town Manager for an overview on this one.
It does seem like there's a interest in donating monetary funds for a bench. The town doesn't have a bench policy, but I did want to sort of standardize this process. I think instead of having benches donated, I think the town should, you know, take ownership of that, and we'll receive any donations for this, and the town staff will install it and so forth. So this is going towards installation of that bench.
Okay, great. So do we have a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
And second. Any discussion?
I just have a question for the Town Manager. Will the papal be able to designate where the benches go? Because I assume this is honoring family members, that kind of thing. Or is staff going to make all those decisions?
Staff makes that determination in conjunction with collaboration with the...
Yeah, this one says it's going to be at Styles and Hart.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I think she's asking, John, I just want to clarify that, that's, it's always going to be in conjunction with staff. You know, maybe there is a desire to put in a location, and maybe staff doesn't think that it's suitable, but it's always in conjunction with staff. It's a collaborative approach.
I'd just add for one minute that as the president of the Bridgewater Improvement Association, for the last hundred years, Bridgewater Improvement Association has provided all the benches around town, the ones that you see on the common, the ones that you see at the library, the ones that you see out at the parks, all of those places. So perhaps we could just work with you and make sure that it, that they look alike, you know, that they look similar or something, instead of having just one that looks different.
That's exactly why we're doing this approach. We want to make sure we standardize it. Initially, I believe the Parks and Rec Commission was just going to allow that person to purchase a bench and install it, and I, I didn't think that was the prudent way to go. So I agree with you.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. Now, next up, we have Order FY twenty-six dash zero two zero, acceptance of gift from Bridgewater State University. And I'll ask our Town Manager for an overview on this one.
Yeah. One, we're very appreciative of the donation. It's a fifty-five thousand dollars for this year. That does go to highway, police, and fire. This is an annual thing, but I'm also glad that Mr. Clark did commit to increase that for next year as well, so we're appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
And second, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will now move on to citizen comments. Due to Massachusetts' open meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the Town Manager at a future Town Council meeting. Anyone may comment at this time for up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I'm sorry to say, I, I just want to say I'm very disappointed that this, the TIF went to advertising. I would have liked to have seen it just killed. It doesn't, it's not necessary. But to go to advertising, I agree with Councilor Hunt, there's a lot of questions that needed to be answered, and you don't have those answers. Yet you're sending to advertising, and then you're going to come back and put it as a public meeting, which this is a public meeting. You've, and I don't think you've got anybody that was here that spoke in favor of the TIF. So it was just an indication, but I think you needed to answer, needed to wait for what the attorney's waiting for from the state. How can you put it to advertising if you don't have all those questions answered? So I'm, but I'm very disappointed, I have to say. And as far as crosswalks, it's not the crosswalks, it's the drivers. I've crossed the street, even out here, and I'm on a crosswalk, and no one was coming, and somebody was just barreling down the street. It's the drivers. I don't know what can be done, but put a policeman out there, whatever. I talked with the manager about doing the crosswalk lighting. Don't have the lights on constantly, you just have it when somebody's crossing the street. But it's the drivers. They're getting worse. And I still want to point out, people need to watch out at the nip. They're proposing a lot of development, water usage, and when they reach their agreed-upon amount that they could do, where are they going to get the other water? That's been kind of a little bit of shadiness there, if I'm going to say it, as to where they're getting that water. But I appreciate if anybody kind of keeps a close eye on what's happening down there. They're going to be cutting down a lot of trees. Planning Board meeting is going to be tomorrow, but I think they, landscape plan is pushed out until October, I was told, but if everybody could please watch out for that. But this TIF thing, too much time is wasted on this TIF. It's not going to benefit the town at all. And people complain about that Broad Street project as being terrible-looking. The problem is, is that that was not owned by the town. That, the owners of those properties should have been made, and there's an ordinance, it's either in the town charter or the administrative code, that people are supposed to be fined if you don't keep up your property. You need to be fined. Somebody needs to be looking into that. So don't blame the town that it wasn't developed. And there've been plenty of opportunities, and even the planning board way back gave approval, but the developer at that time wanted two more units and they didn't, couldn't get it, and so, oh, goodbye. It was, it was their decision, not the town's. So the, it is backwards on this TIF. The developer, as Ms. McGrath said, already bought it. Now they want a TIF, and I still haven't heard whose bright storm was it to put it as a TIF. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Evening again. James Walsh, sixty Crescent Street. First off, I wanted to thank Councilor Lindy for taking up my, my suggestion there for, for implementation on the strategic goals. And I did want to just quickly clarify, I, I get a little nervous when I'm under the gun with the timer, so if, if I wasn't super clear on my last point there about the affordable housing. I know I mentioned it a couple of times, but the, the real crux of the, the challenge there is that when we drop below ten percent affordable housing, developers are allowed to bypass a lot of our, you know, special permit processes. So I just see this as a big crisis. You know, we, we've passed a lot of zoning changes, form-based code, a lot of different things in the past. It sounds like, to be honest with you, with the Perkins Development, it sounds like we might be under it. So maybe this is something that we have to, to really think about, that, that's coming soon, that, that people will be able to bypass a lot of our, our local control. And quite frankly, I'd rather have, you know, I, I understand, I, I really do understand the, the controversy, but I, I at least appreciate in this situation that, that someone's coming to the table and that we're able to have this give and take, and we're able to see numbers before making a decision, versus just being, you know, kind of trampled over as, as has happened in the past. I did also want to thank Councilor Murphy for bringing up that, that question about the acceptance of a private way. That development over there is, is massive. I, I think Old Field Road alone is about fifty homes or so. I know there's, you know, snow plowing and paving and all of that, but there's a lot of other things that, that come into play, I, I believe, when we accept a private way. Don't quote me on it, but I think in the, I think in the order, the zoning ordinance, if you're building a, a private way off of a public way, you actually can build more. You can build more houses, you can build more kind of density, because the thought is you're linking into a public way. So if we do this, are, are we then allowing, like, is the, the company that owns Old Field, are they planning now to then take advantage of that and build more? I, I just like maybe some of that answered. You know, what are we, what are we giving away by right if we do that? So anyway, thank you for hearing me out. Appreciate all the, the conversation and the debate tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlton Hunt, Austin Street, Vice Chair of the CPC. Little bit of an update on Styles and Hart. I'm glad there's a bench coming in. We have benches there. In Styles and Hart, there are four or five locations for benches already identified in the plan that was put together, and the CPC funded it, three point, three, one point three million dollars with a grant that reimburses some of that. So it's important to have that also, but the other thing I wanted to let you guys know, that project is stalled. It's about half-done. And we had a meeting, CPC officers had a meeting with Mr. Rulie this week. We have a meeting next week with to kickstart that again. There are some issues around the access for the accessible trail. It's on the southern end of it. It's by the river. That project stalled. CPC paid for it. We try to monitor the costs on it. We know how much money's in that account. And there is sufficient money there to move it forward and finish it. So next week, we hope to have a good discussion in order to deal with a couple of major issues, especially related to the southern parking lot. There has to be a curb cut there, and the state's put some requests on that may or may not use all our money up. The other thing I wanted to talk about very briefly is the Town River Landing. The CPC denied an eligibility application for Fire for Effect for the Town River Landing, not because we didn't want that work to go forward, but because the license that he signed, the town and the Town Manager signed, has a clause in it that states, and it could be reinterpreted, I think, but it states specifically, no town money for improvements in that park. Thank you.
Anyone else here to come up and speak? Okay.
Alaserta, Laurel Street. So I heard a bunch of stuff about the agreement, the agreement, the agreement. Let me be extremely clear about the agreement. The agreement is a five-year right of use. is a five-year right of use. The agreement was never intended for, and I think it would be unreasonable to expect, with all the work that we've done over the past three years cleaning that place up, through no fault of our own, having it been to the state it was, it would be unreasonable for us to expect that we would fund our nonprofit, or we use our nonprofit to fund all the crazy improvements that need to be done to undo all the damage that was done down there 25 years. I don't think that we should be expected to fund an $80,000 pavilion down there. I don't think that that's reasonable for us. So the agreement was never intended to, yeah, we do clean up, we do grass, we do, we do small things that are reasonable. We're not putting up major structures that we don't own on a piece of property that we don't own. We're improving this piece of property for the town. We're bringing in events for the, for the town to have that we don't have. And we're expanding that all the time. And that's all we're doing. So I don't want, yeah, I put in for funding for the money, knowing I'd get denied, and then knowing I'd get a reason why I'd get denied, and then I'd understand a little bit better. So that, that is the reason why the agreement was written that way. And I appreciate the help on that. I really do. Because it's not easy. You know, we don't have a lot of funds. All we have is, is, you know, we dig holes, we do the best we can. But at some point, things just don't magically appear. You know, they, they just don't. And I really do appreciate the help. And I hope that, you know, there's, there's a way to help us get that going, and we keep going that way. If there isn't, then I'll have to find a way. But I appreciate you guys, everybody here at the council, taking the time to think about that and even consider it. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming up and speak tonight. We'll now go on to council comments. I'll start with Counselor Lindy.
The NIP was mentioned earlier. I believe there's a cleanup going on this weekend, Saturday, the 6th. I don't know the time. Maybe you can address that when you finish the last word comments. But I know it was on the Friends of the Lake, Lake, nip and nick it Facebook page. I want to thank all the citizens for coming out and bearing with us and giving us some good ideas and feedback. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Counselor Hunt?
Yes, I'm going to say a quick thanks to James Walsh for bringing up the affordable housing situation. I remember well when Bridgewater was under the 10%. And I remember that it was not pleasant. And we were very, very excited when we got up in the 12%, 15% range. So it makes me quite nervous to think that we're scooting down to possibly be under 10% again. I hope we can figure out ways to not, not get below it and kind of increase it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Perry?
Thank you. Just welcome everyone to fall, since we are past Labor Day. I remember when you're just going back to school and all the fall sports are getting started. So I want to wish all the fall sports teams from high school all the way down to the Badgers, good luck in their respective seasons this year. I did want to mention, we could go plus Friday, based back when I was council president, we finally got the approval in place. And we had the ceremony to name the former high school, now the middle school, in honor of Edward O'Donoghue, former headmaster and superintendent here in Bridgewater for many years. I was in high school when Mr. O'Donoghue was there, and he left lasting impression on many, many students that he crossed paths with since he was there in the early 1970s. It was great to see his wife and his kids there, because I went to school with. So it was, it was great to finally get that school named in his honor. It was originally dedicated to him in 2001, so it's taken a whole long time. Glad we finally got it set up, and I'm glad they finally spelled his name right on the building. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Strigels?
Thank you. Thank you to everyone that came tonight. Thank you for any of the accolades that people in the audience also gave, myself and the committee. We did our best to be as thorough as possible while still being mindful of the task at hand and the time that it had already taken. So we do believe that we are in a good spot. And I appreciate everything that everyone had to say. I know that there's some disappointment. But in anything that we ever do, we're never going to please 100% of people. But hopefully, with exposure to information, people can learn about the process a little bit more and then judge based on factual information versus what they may think going into something. I also want to extend well wishes to all the kids that started school today. It was great to see my entire social media flooded with back to school. And I know that level of crazy will probably be in a lot of people's households for the next few weeks, getting back to routines. But I'm a few years away from that. But ultimately, it was really nice to see and very heartwarming to hear about some of my close friends' little kids' first days of school, starting kindergarten. So to all of the COVID kindergarteners that got to start today, I hope you had a great day. And to all of our seniors, I hope you had a good last first day of school before you decide to do whatever you decide to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ellenberg?
Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong. Is there a CED meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM?
No.
Okay.
You don't have a continuation of the hearing?
The next meeting.
Okay.
So, anyway, I just want to thank the residents for coming, and thank you for your comments, everybody. That's all.
Counselor Kennedy?
Thank you again for the public coming out, voicing your concerns. I know the TIF is a hot topic, and we now have a hearing where both sides of this can put their ideas out there and explain why, and the pros and cons as you see them, as to how this may or may not benefit the town. And I look forward to that discussion. So let everyone know that that's going to be happening. I'm sure it'll be out on social media at some point soon, and we'll all hear about it. But I also appreciate my counselors for taking the time to do this. It's getting a little late. So thank you, everybody, for putting the time in. Have a good night.
Thank you. Vice President McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. This Saturday, they're going to have a farmer's market at Town's Landing. It's pretty big. I'm going to be working down there at the Cert, so I hope everyone drives and behaves, so I don't have to give anyone a ticket. So I hope you show up, because Al says he's got quite a turnout this time.
Awesome. All right, thank you. You stole one of my comments. Yeah, Saturday, we have the farmer's market at Town River Landing. And it is now, we're now getting to fall, it's September, so it's a great time for farmer's markets. There's also one in October. But between those two, there is the car show that Counselor McGrath mentioned that is also September 21st. So please get out there. Please, please support those efforts in that group, and we'll continue to have wonderful events. And then Counselor Lindy asked about the cleanup at the NIP. That is this Saturday at 10:00 AM. So for anybody that wants to go out there and help clean up, that would be, that'd be great. I'm going to do my best to get out there myself. So I will see you there if you guys show up. And that's all I have for tonight. So I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some moved. Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.